August 8th Planning and Zoning Commission, roll call please.
Katharina Barbie.
Here.
Vicky Buckley.
Here.
David Castro.
Here.
Max Maxwell.
Here.
Deborah Neer. Jerry Wright. Chair Christina Doe.
Here.
We have a quorum.
The approval of the agenda, any additions, deletions, or corrections? If none, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
So moved by Buckley.
Seconded.
Seconded by Maxwell, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The approval of the July 5th, 2018 minutes, any additions, deletions, or corrections? And if none, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
So moved by Buckley.
Second.
Second by Barbie, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This is the public participation portion of the meeting for anyone that would like to comment on anything that is not part of the agenda. So we welcome anyone to go to the podium if you have anything outside of the agenda. Okay, there being none, we move to new business. This is a continued public hearing for the petition by Brad Coppins applicant and Brian Shali and Sheila Prahlud owners for approval of a special use permit for a video gaming establishment in the G.C. General Commercial District for property located at 850 to 852 South Fourth Street are the petitioners here. And if you can name an address, please?
My name's Brad Coppins, 13 Metal Trail West here in DeKalb. Go through my presentation here, most of you were here for the last one, the July 5th, it's basically the same presentation with a few additions to it. Subject site is building right here, it's a little tough to see, but this is the overhead And here's a bigger view of, thank you Dan, the building as founders way behind the building there. And one thing I wanted to point out was we talked about crosswalks for the kids that they use, since there's some schools in the area. The only crosswalk that is used by the children is East Taylor and South Fourth Street, that corner right next to the White Hen. So children don't cross the street anywhere near the Mazies facility, which is actually 854 South Fourth Street, we just got, the people who hand out addresses gave me that address, is what it would be, so 854. Signage that would be used, we originally had a sign that had said Mazies and then video gaming and slots underneath, we removed the video gaming and slots underneath there, which was fine by me because the people that are going to use a facility like this, they know what it is, they don't need to be told, they know what it's going to be. There's a view from the front of the building. Talk about parking here, I guess. I don't, we only plan, we can only have five machines, which is what the state says, so I don't anticipate ever having more than five or six people in the facility at one time. I've gone to all the other ones in DeKalb multiple times, at multiple different times a day. I've also inquired of the employees there about what their busy times are, and they say the busy times are usually afternoons. They also have waiting lists, since there's only five machines, and they said the waiting lists get very rarely used. So my anticipation is if people drive by, see a bunch of cars there, they're going to go to another place and play their game. One thing I also wanted to point out was that you never see signs on these places saying that they have the newest machines, or the nicest machines, or whatever, because all the machines are the same. The same machine you can play at CJ's is also at Penny's, and it's, you know, they're basically the same machines. So if someone comes to my place, they see their machines being used, they might just go right down the street, go to Twins, go to Sully's, go to wherever, CJ's. So the parking will be ample for people that'll be in the facility, in my estimation. Signage that's not Mazies sign, well, Dan was kind enough to put this in there, the orange marker is, the city allows 40% of the frontage to be used for advertising, and what I would put up is things, you see like a triple seven, red, white, blue, slot machine, things like that. You won't see any alcohol advertising, I will never have a happy hour, I will never have discounted beers, we're going to charge the same price all the time, and as I've said at the last meeting, I anticipate selling less than 20 beers a day. And I will also point out that based on the fee of, the liquor license fee, and then the re-upping fee, I will actually lose money on alcohol based on what I'm paying the city for the fees, for having a liquor license. I don't anticipate selling much at all. Here's another layout of the building. The, one thing to point out here was the, we're going to put around, there's currently no protective fence around the garbage, and that will be put in there. Other than that, we're not going to make any adjustments to the building, we're not going to, the building's very nice already, it's pretty much turnkey, we need to add four sinks, or five sinks, and a bathroom, but that's about it. Here's the layout of the building, and this is not absolutely correct either, because we did move one bathroom from where it says new toilet, we actually moved that farther up. So it'll be a bathroom against the top wall, and then the existing bathroom, which we're going to keep as ladies bathroom, and then there'll be, the county health department requires four sinks, even though we're not serving food, so we're going to put four sinks in there, so we'll have six sinks along that line, including the bathrooms. Compliance, we've, the only thing I haven't filled out the paperwork for yet is the county health department to get the sinks in yet, because we're not going to start that project until we get approval, which would, so everything else has been applied for and approved. One thing I also wanted to point out was, south side of DeKalb doesn't have currently any video gaming cafes, what I would call a cafe. Twins has it, has three machines, but that's a bar, there's also Legion down there, but there's no places like CJ's, or like Penny's, or Suzie's on Barbara Green and Sycamore Road. Those are strictly cafes, people come in there, they don't go in there to drink, they go in there to play the machines, they want to be left alone, and that's it. They, people don't go in there to binge drink or watch TV, because that's not what the place is for. The hours are one of the things we've adjusted, drinking hours, I should say. As you notice, the hours are pretty extensive, and this is what the state allows us to do, and the city also, 7:00 AM to 1:00 AM, Monday through Wednesday, Thursday and Fri, Thursday through Saturday is to 2:00, Sunday is 10:00 to 1:00. We have agreed that, I tried to open this without liquor at all, obviously the state won't let you, because you have to have a liquor license. And I have no problem, Dan, I came up with 10:00 AM, since it's Sunday is 10:00 AM liquor hours, I have no problem not serving alcohol until 10 o'clock. Another point is, that other people have brought up is, these are just the hours that we're allowed to open. A lot of the other places in town have shrunk their hours, because they found no one's coming in between 7:00 and 9:00, no one's coming in. The one, Barbara Green and Suzie's, Barbara Green and Sycamore Road is a perfect example. They shrunk their hours, because no one's coming in late, no one's coming in early. So I think they're open at 9:00 now, and they close at 11:00. So they shrunk four hours off their day. And I might do that also, if I, if no one's coming in between 7:00 and 9:00, there's no reason to have the lights on and have an employee there, so. I'm looking, because of the extensive hours, I'm looking at eight employees, I can't have an employee work more than 30 hours, because then they require healthcare, so I'm going to try and make sure that we can get everybody in there that works less than 30 hours a Already going over the capacity, five games max, is what we're going to have. The, these are notes taken, I won't go through all of them, but these are basically, these are notes taken word for word from the DeKalb City Council goals, and they all say basically the same thing. Fill some vacant buildings on the south side and get some business rolling. Permits I've gone over, we've, I've gone through all the permits and got them, I have a liquor license from the city of DeKalb, I've applied for my state license, that's in the mail. I've already passed alcohol training, all employees will be required to pass alcohol training, there's 120-day window, or from when they start until they have to have it done, but the city is, the police department was kind enough, they keep in contact with me and tell me when, he said, whenever you guys got enough guys, bring them over, or ladies, bring them over and we're gonna, and they'll have the class. The positive impacts for DeKalb, filling an empty commercial property currently on South Fourth Street, employing local citizens, I, my goal is, is to hire southsiders, and I had to sign up for employment, and my goal is to get people that work on the south side, or live on the south side, to work there. Why not? Makes the most sense. Revenues, I'm looking at $4,000 a year, and fees to the city, $2,500 for the gaming license, $1,500 for the liquor license, or actually it's the opposite, I think. And in my estimation, based on the public numbers that are readily available by anybody, with internet access, I'm expecting $2,000 a month to go to the city. And that's regardless if I make a dollar or not. I mean, I could break even, the city still gets their cut. City is, doesn't get profit, they get 10%, 10% of the take. And also point out that, I live in DeKalb, the building owners live in DeKalb, all the money will stay here in DeKalb, and we're both homeowners too, so. That's all I had.
Thank you. So I open to the city.
Thank you, you have in your staff report, or in your packet the staff report, going through the project, it was updated from the last initial hearing on July 5th. So this is a request for a special use, the zoning is general commercial, a video gaming establishment's special use in that particular district. The building currently contains a State Farm insurance business, and also a massage therapist. The beauty shop has moved out, but they're trying to lease that to a similar type use. So the applicant's given a description of their proposed operation, how they believe it will comply with the UDO, and the standards for a special use. Went over the background at the last hearing regarding video gaming establishments, again there was a moratorium a few years ago, and that number was increased by the council from 7 to 10. Again, video gaming establishments are where the video gaming is the primary use in the Earlier in the spring, the city council approved ordinance allowing these three different locations, including this one, for a video gaming or liquor license. So the applicants applied for that in the required timeframe, when the conditions of liquor license is that they have to get a special use permit. So the ordinance doesn't grant them the special use, they still have to go through the process and meet the standards and get that approved. So at the initial public hearing, there was, we had some comments from the Children's Learning Center regarding the presence of children in the area, and their operation and concern, they noted objection to the proposed video gaming at this location. We also had an email from the school district, they have their administrative offices across Fourth Street also. Since the hearing, we did have the police department provide us data regarding calls for service at the seven existing video gaming establishments, and those numbers are in your packet, of the summary in terms of the amount of calls, et cetera. In summary, the police chief Lowery indicated that there's no significant demand for public safety resources, nor any quality of life or crime concerns related to the existing video gaming establishments. So in relation to the hours of operation, there were some comments and concerns regarding that, the, as mentioned, the applicant's agreed to not start any alcohol sales till 10:00 AM. The liquor license regulations for the city allow at 6:00 AM, actually, and initially proposed at 7:00 AM, so he's agreed to not start till 10:00 AM. Regarding the proximity of the establishment to the daycare center and the Founders Elementary School to the east, in terms of the wall signs, as mentioned, there's a detail in there that if approved, a condition that there be no reference to gambling or liquor sales on the wall sign, so they've updated the imagery regarding what they're proposing for the wall signs, they'll still have to get a permit for that in terms of the size, so they've agreed to that. And also the window sign, agreed to no more than, currently the ordinance allows no more than 40% of a window be covered with signage, and they've agreed, what we're proposing is that no more than 40% of one window pane, so that it's more limited than the current regulation, so it shows roughly a 40% in the red there of the typical, of what it might look like in terms of references to gambling and liquor sales, is limited to that area. So that's one of the conditions we're recommending too. So for a special use, all special uses, there's findings of fact, it's in your staff report. The first one, that the special use complies with all provisions of the UDO regulations, they meet all the requirements of the General Commercial District and UDO. The property's 120 feet away from the nearest property line of a school, meeting the state, the Illinois Liquor Control Act in terms of separation. Also the standard that the special use will not unreasonably detrimental to the value of other property in the neighborhood. The special use will not have a detrimental effect, land uses, site's been zoned commercial for decades, there's been a variety of commercial uses in there, there's commercial uses up and down South Fourth Street. Data from the police department indicates there's no significant demand for public safety resources, or any concerns regarding life or crime concerns related to these video gaming establishments or any city, and then, of course, this one. And there's restrictions recommended regarding the hours for liquor sales, and also on advertising on the property. Third one deals with the operation, that it's not dominate the immediate area in terms of future development. The surrounding areas pretty much developed already, commercial uses up and down Fourth Street, single family to the east and to the southeast, two daycare centers across the street, administrative offices for the school district. As I mentioned, the twin tavern a block and a half south has video gaming, as does American Legion three blocks south of this site, also on South Fourth Street. Adequate utilities are provided at the site. Fifth one, again, deals with the compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood, again, believe that it will not be detrimental to the surrounding permitted and special uses in the area. Restrictions are placed on the advertising of video gaming and the hours of operation for liquor sales. Revenues from the gaming operation are estimated by the applicant to be about $20,000 per year, and it will take up a vacant tenant space along South Fourth Street, and be additional economic benefit for that corridor. For citizen response comments, we did receive at the last hearing, it was provided to you, and also provided again, a comment letter or response form for the resident 917 South Fifth Street. Also received an email from the superintendent for the school district indicating their concerns about the operation. And since the last hearing, we received an email from the employees of State Farm, it's up on your dius tonight, the employees in the State Farm office there on the location noting that there's, you know, in terms of where the crossing is, there's not much activity from children walking by at all, noting that they're, you know, they don't see children from Founders in the area, so this is a amount of limited activity in that area. Also received since the hearing, which I think the chair may read into the record, email from the neighbor at 418 Culver Street, Rich Kukuri, hopefully pronouncing that right with concerns related to the project. So make those part of the record. So in conclusion, we think this is, meets the standards of a special use, there's a sample motion recommending approval, with the conditions on Exhibit A, again referencing the floor area in terms of where this video gaming operation can locate in the building. Basically, the southern part of the building, special use permit must also comply with the city issued liquor license for the site. Reference to the alcohol sales, not starting till 10:00 AM. And then the limitations on the wall signage, as I mentioned, with the, any reference to gambling or liquor sales, and also the restriction on the window signage, is one of the conditions.
Okay, thank you. So I'll open up the public portion of the hearing, and I will start out with the two emails, as Dan referenced. Email one, "We are writing to clarify a few things on the gaming facility Mazies at 852 South Fourth Street. It's on the corner of Culver and South Fourth Street, there is no crossing guard at this location. The nearest crossing guard is located at South Fourth and Taylor. We work at State Farm, which is in the same building, and have never witnessed any children walking home from school on our side of the street. They always walk on the, they always walk on the opposite side from Huntley Middle School. Children from Founders never come over to this area. The school traffic that we do see is very limited, as our business is not in a neighborhood. One of the employees has worked here over 30 years, and has never had any issues with horseplay or children loitering in or near our parking lot." And the second email that we received, "Hello Dan, my name is Rich Kukuri," again, sorry if we mispronounce that, "and my wife Sarah, and our three children live at 418 Culver Street, right behind where the proposed gaming site will be. While we are in favor of bringing in businesses to help out the area, we both believe that a video gaming establishment is the wrong choice. I understand the need that Brian has to fill the space that has been empty since Amanda's moved out, moved over to their new location on Hillcrest. That space has been unoccupied for a long time, as have other buildings along South Fourth Street, but filling it with video gaming machines and serving alcohol does not seem to be a logical choice. We have a list of concerns that we would like to voice. One, closeness to Founder Library and both CLC and the growing place, not to mention Huntley Middle School. Two, hours of operation. Three, alcohol being served. Four, increase of traffic." To give some detail on each, one, while both CLC and the growing place don't have kids walking to get there, they both take their kids on walks during the day to local parks, including Founders', which requires them to cross Fourth Street to get there. Both Founders and Huntley have kids that walk to and from school every day during the school year. We already have an issue with cars speeding down both Fourth Street and Culver. In parenthesis, we have asked multiple times for extra patrols. Adding an establishment that would open at 7:00 AM during the, during the week seems like adding another element of danger to the children walking to school. In parenthesis, who needs to gamble at 7:00 AM? My wife also watches children in our home and is outside on, and on walks with them every day. Number two, hours of operations. Why does the site have to open at 7:00 AM? What kind of clientele are they hoping to attract at that time? People with addictions? Staying open until 1:00 or 2:00 AM? Why? I read the report where it said that they would cut back hours if the business was slow after midnight, but why not close at midnight, and if the business needs study warranted, then stay open later? In parenthesis, would that study be available for the neighborhood to see? We have to worry enough about people wandering through the neighborhood, our yard, we don't need to give them another reason to do so, especially if they have been drinking. Number three, alcohol being served. Mr. Coppins said at the last hearing that this will not be a bar, but what else do you call an establishment that serves alcohol and not food? Will the people working there be trained to tell when to cut off people that have had too much to drink? Like stated before, we have had problems with people cutting through our yard, I don't want to have to worry about what will happen if I have to confront a person in my yard that has been drinking. I also don't want to have, don't want to have to have my wife, in parenthesis, while watching other people's children, worry about having an increase in people, in parenthesis, both driving and walking, that have been drinking. I appreciate the idea of not serving alcohol before 10:00 AM, but it isn't enough. Number four, increase in traffic. As stated before, we have issues with people speeding down Culver and Fourth Street, adding another location that serves alcohol, and then releases, in quotes, "its customers out into the world would seem like tossing unnecessary fuel on an existing fire." We are not the only family that has children near the site that are worried about this. The house just north of the building has kids that live there, and also, and also has a house full of grandchildren on the weekends. The neighbors that live just east of us have three small children that also play outside all the time. After talking with the other neighbors, we realized that we may be the, that we may be the only ones speaking out. The others feel that this establishment opening is already a done deal, and that these hearings are just to try to make it seem like we had a say in it. We do appreciate Mrs. Tobota of CLC and Jamie Craven of District 428 speaking against the opening of the establishment, and applaud their effort. We wish that we could be there to express our thoughts about this." I don't think I need to state that paragraph, it's got personal information in it. I would appreciate if you could forward this email to the appropriate person, so that it can be read at the meeting. Thank you for your time, and feel free to contact me at any time. And I have a couple of speaker request forms, so I'll call you up to the podium, if you'd state your name and address when I do.
Good evening, I'm Jamie Craven, Superintendent of DeKalb School District, 901 South Fourth Street. As I shared in the email, we obviously weren't able to make the last meeting, we're here to speak about the potential gambling and liquor permit. We are concerned about the proximity that this facility will have with Founder School. While I understand the folks from the insurance agency have stated that there aren't students that are typically coming down that side of the street, there is high foot traffic, however, from our students. That is concerning, the fact that it's across the street from the education center where there are two facilities that have daycares, that too is, is a bit of a concern. And we do support economic development and business development, we just hope that the location will be considered in the proximity of Huntley School and Founders', and the foot traffic that typically will be in and about that area. Thank you.
And then another form, Bessie Cronopoulos.
Good evening. Much of what I want to express has been expressed by the gentleman who lives on Culver, he articulated very well some of the concerns that I have, the proximity to the school, and to the Children's Learning Center, you know, the concerns about the consumption of alcohol, and so on and so forth. I've known Brian Shali for many years, and I understand that, you know, he needs to fill the facility, I understand that, and I know this gentleman has probably gone through quite a bit going through the process, and I applaud him for doing that, and I feel badly not being in support of that, but this is not the location for that type of an establishment. When the city is comparing this establishment to existing establishments such as Twins, which house video games, those fall under a kind of a different criteria, you're comparing apples, you know, and oranges. An establishment like Twins has certain regulations that kind of set up a type of a control mechanism for anything extra. This is totally out of place. That whole area, South Fourth Street, is a corridor into the city. For the longest time, I have, I think I've come before, the planning commission before, and I've talked to the staff, and I've talked to the previous councils and aldermen, we really need to look at that entire area as a whole. It is a little gold mine. It has a lot of activity with the sports center, and the school, and a variety of very sound establishments, many of whom have been there for many, many years, like Twins and Leehands. It's time to look at that area in a serious economic development fashion, and not just try to fill it for the sake of filling it, that's not always the best idea. And I realize that this is not what this particular board is charged with, this is a city council matter, but you do have the obligation of looking as to whether or not you agree with going through with a special use permit, and I hope that you say no, because this is just not the place for it, it's not a healthy kind of an atmosphere, and the city council probably needs to look and revisit the moratorium again. Getting more video gaming establishments in the city of DeKalb is not at the top of my list of what good, sound economic development is all about. And another point that was brought out by the city, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't see the police chief here, but if I recall correctly, he did at one point in time, when this was being point in time when this was being, this issue of video games was being discussed, he did not exactly speak in the most positive of manners. He wasn't really jumping up and down with glee at having more video game stores because of other issues that developed from having too many of those in an area. Why the state has done this, I have no idea. But it's very short sighted and we have the ability to shoot for quality in our city, not just to fill a location. Sorry, Brian. Love you dearly, but this is not the place.
Okay, I have no other speaker forms. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to comment on this item? Mr. Coppins, I do have a couple, I know there were a couple of questions in this one email that I read, so if you could, I'm going to go ahead and kind of bring those up so you can answer, just so they're on record. So one of the areas was about the alcohol being served. And there actually were some pretty good questions in here. So will you have, is part of the training with the staff on how many drink, or how to tell if somebody's been drinking too much, like when to cut a person off?
I've already passed the course, as well as a couple of other people that I plan on having taken hours there, and it's a five-hour course and it's extensive. They do a lot of role-playing, they show videos, it's a five-hour course, so it's pretty extensive.
So in that, is there a cap on the number of drinks that you can serve a person in a certain amount of time?
Yes.
Okay. So that's all in that training?
Correct.
Okay. And if I remember correctly, at the last meeting, there will be snacks available, so there is food available.
Chips, crackers, pretzels.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I think those were the main questions that you hadn't already.
One thing I would like to point out, if it's okay, I forgot to mention before, is that stats, these been open since 2012 here in the state. Stats show that over fifty percent of the people that use it are women and over fifty percent of the people that use it are also above the age of fifty. So the majority of people that use these places are women over the ages of fifty. And why I think it's a good idea for the South Side is because people on the South Side, women don't, might not want to go into Twins and have their neighbors watch them and play there. And Twins only has three machines, so. Clientele is more mature, it's a clientele of people that usually have disposable income.
Okay.
And that's not kids.
Okay, thank you. So before I close the public portion, is there anyone else? I'll give the commissioners a chance to comment. Max is new, so trying to guide him as we're going through this.
Seat's not even warm.
So is there any other comments from the audience? Okay, so I'm going to open to the commissioners for any questions or comments. I'll go ahead and let you go first.
Thank you. A quick question for me, and excuse my inebité for being involved in this fairly late in the game, but will you be serving hard liquor or is it just beer and wine?
No, just beer and wine.
Okay.
Thanks.
That answers a lot of questions.
I have a couple. You said you've checked with like CJ's and Suzie's and some of the others. Can you share what they told you about the amount of alcohol that is served?
I just asked actually a couple of people and the one woman didn't say and then another woman said, "We sell less than twenty beers a day." And actually, it's Suzie's on Barbara Green and Sycamore Road, and they have a cooler for their beer that's so small, it's like twenty beers can fit in there. So they're not serving, I've never seen, I've been in these places a lot just doing research and I've never seen anybody order a drink. They're all quietly playing in the back.
Do you have, maybe Brian has it and maybe you don't, any idea of what Amanda's traffic count was, how many cars, how many people she had in there in a given day?
Brian, go ahead and state your name and address, please.
My name is Brian Shali. I'm at 455 Quinlan Avenue in DeKalb. I'm the owner of the building. When Amanda's was there, she varied between three to five employees at any one point. At one point, she was down to just herself and another. So her traffic count was pretty much regular. People, the building, if we could go back to a slide that would show the front of the building, yeah, the building, you see the two double doors. To that point to the south was the salon section and she probably had about eight or nine chairs, but she had one or two stylists at tops, including herself. And to the left are spa rooms. I've now since divided that building in half, so the gaming facility that would be on the South Side is standalone, has its own entrance, and the spa rooms have their own entrance. Currently, I have just one tenant, which is a prenatal massage person. I had two other tenants, but both of them have left and breached their contract, leaving, didn't have enough business, and the other one didn't pay a rent. So it's designed to be set up for startup businesses, you know, their first places, because the rent is $350 for a spa room and $600 for that one salon room. But yeah, very, very little traffic we had before, and before that was all-season floors and that was, you know, just kind of in and out traffic, so.
Just a follow-up on the parking. The number of spaces required per our UDO is eleven, they have fourteen spaces, so there is adequate parking on-site per our ordinance.
Mr. Olson, I just have a, more than anything else, a technicality here, a technical question. So Founder's Elementary is immediately to the east of this property, correct? The map is useful.
It's not directly east there.
Correct. And then there are, there is the Education Center just across the street to the west.
Right, up on the aerial. Go ahead.
And then, I just want to get a picture in my head of the Children's Learning Center is immediately south, am I correct?
Yeah, let me just show on the aerial here a little. Here's the corner of Culver and South Fourth Street, has a proposed video gaming here. There's two residents to the east and then the property line and here's Founder's Elementary School. School District Administrative Offices are here and then south is the Growing Place and Children's Learning Center, the two daycare centers.
So there's a number, there's a given distance beyond which establishments of this nature can be established beyond the school setting, is that correct?
Two schools, not daycare centers.
Correct. So in this case, in this case, it's the Founder's School?
They're a hundred and twenty feet away and the state requirement is a hundred feet.
Correct. And then the other two places that we just talked about don't qualify as a school, is that correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Per state law.
Okay. And just out of curiosity, where do we start measuring those hundred feet?
At the property line.
So it's right on that line by the houses?
Yeah, the lots are sixty-foot wide each, so it's a hundred and twenty feet away.
Okay.
I don't have any more comments right now. Thank you.
Max, do you have anything?
I do have one question. Mr. Coppins, I just had a quick question. You projected revenue for the establishment at $20,000 a year. Did I hear that correctly or?
No, you didn't. It's, since the numbers are public knowledge, I look up the numbers, but I only look up the numbers of what the owner's take is, so that's the only, I don't look at all the other ones.
I was just establishing that based on what you had considered the city's satisfaction would be, so.
My estimate is between.
You don't need to comment, that's okay. That'll be to pull you up front on that. What you can do is great for us, so.
If you ballpark that.
Yep, absolutely. I can do the math. Thank you.
Anything further? Oh, yeah? Okay. One more opportunity for the public before I close the public hearing, if there's anyone else. We are prepared to close the public hearing, correct? Okay, going to close the public hearing. So now, any further discussion or questions from the commissioners?
I just have something I'd like to add just from personal experience, and I think I've mentioned this before. We, our building is attached to Suzie's. Been there for about two years, two and a half years. We have all of about four parking spaces for our staff and they have three or four. We have no parking issues. We have, I just don't see people in and out a lot, so I have that personal experience to go from that. It's not a huge issue and it's all older people that I see. I'm hoping this is what he's going by, I don't know, but my personal experience, working next to it, I see what goes on and comes and goes, and they did shorten their hours. They don't open till I think their staff comes in at eight, their one staff comes in at eight. I leave at five and there might be two cars in the parking lot. I wish I left at five, six. That's just personal input from experience being next to one.
Thank you.
I would also add that with five gaming machines, I mean, that's a pretty limited clientele, so it's not as if it's going to be a gas station or anything to that degree in terms of traffic coming in and out. I understand the concern about being close to CLC, my kids went there, and, but that in and of itself, I mean, I think, don't think that people that are going to be daytime gambling are lured in any way, so. I don't imagine it's going to be that big of an issue. It's not a downtown DeKalb bar, so that's just my two cents.
I don't know, I am just concerned about the closeness to, oh, I have to get closer to, computer problems today. I'm just concerned about the closeness of the property. I mean, it's basically like two steps or something, right, where the next, where the residential area is the Kakunen, or what was their name?
Kukuri.
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 Kukuri, yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm, I mean, I'm just thinking about if I were to live there, how I would feel about that. And I wouldn't be so happy about that. I know South Fourth Street needs to be redeveloped, but we're not really putting in anything that makes a real positive impact, I think. But then I don't have any better ideas either, so.
That's fair.
Yeah.
People in that book.
Yeah. David?
My turn. So I think if anything, what I am going to say is going to be an echo of what Ms. Cronopoulos brought up, and that is, there is an absence, a big gap of, in this area from the city perspective on a plan, a plan that is comprehensive for this whole corridor. And in the absence, big absence of this plan, we find this. And technically speaking, there is no reason to say no to something like this. I just cleared, if anything, the most technical of technicalities, the distance between the school and this place. You know, if there was a comprehensive plan, I can almost imagine something like this fitting in. But in the absence of context, here we are dealing with this. Let me get this straight. I have, on moral grounds, I have absolutely no objection to this. I have no objection to this, like I have no objection to drinking, for example, you know, we can get into other, sometimes bad habits of human beings, like me. But if I had a problem is, again, it just doesn't feel right, not because of the place, but because of the absence of context. I mean, this is coming in as it is, technically it fits, you know, we're not, we're not looking at this against some other alternative or some other context. Again, we're dealing with the absence of a plan, a bigger plan for this whole area. So I cannot, I cannot say no to this on technical grounds, and I will say the same thing I have said this before in similar situations, to add to that context, and that is diversity. I mean, we seem to be getting more and more of these gaming places in town, and yes, there is a limit. In the city, there's a limit to the number of establishments like this, that is true. But, I mean, as it is, it seems like we're already kind of at capacity on this, on this end, is my general feeling over this. So on technical grounds, no, I cannot say no. In terms of, again, the absence of a plan for this whole area, sometimes for the rest of the city, I think we have to look at ourselves and start thinking more actively about it.
If I can comment, I went to school at DeKalb High School, which is now the middle school, and South Fourth Street has been an issue for a very long time. There have been a number of plans to develop that area, there have been another initiatives to do it, and quite frankly, we haven't been able to attract the businesses that we wanted to, to reinvigorate that area. I understand it's a gambling establishment, but it's beer and wine, and I'm not saying that that is the probably desired business to go near a school like that, but nevertheless, it's somebody that's going to fill a space, pay their taxes, and it's going to appease the people that want to go there. And again, beer and wine establishment that does video gambling, I don't think is going to be Otto's in its heyday. So that having been said, I would agree with you that there are a lot of things that we could do to revitalize South Fourth. There's been a number of plans, failed and otherwise. There's been a number of TIF dollars spent in that area, but I cannot in any good conscience object to the fact that something that I think is going to be fairly innocuous should not establish itself there. And that having been said, again, I'll go back to the point that it's not a bar necessarily, it's a beer and wine and it's a gambling establishment, and I don't see any issue with, you know, I think we're all assuming that the people that, you know, might be in gray-haired and coming in at noon for a cocktail are going to be the lurid people that they are. I don't buy that. So I understand the concern, but I don't think it's going to attract nearly the volume nor the clientele that people are anticipating that would be an issue, so, based on my history.
Anything further? Okay. So before we call for, before I call for a motion, I just want to remind, and for the public, that we are voting on the special use permit. Our decision is not the final decision on this, as it does go to City Council after us. So we are only voting on the special use permit. We're not voting with the fact that we're approving this establishment to go there.
You're recommending to the council.
Correct. So that the public understands it. So if you all are ready, I'd be happy to take a motion.
May I say one more thing, just in response to what Mr. Maxwell was saying, and for the sake of making this a dialogue here, I certainly appreciate your comments, and I guess the only one thing that I would have to add is, you know, we have to wonder what comes first. Are we going to fill up the entire South Fourth Street with whatever comes in front of this commission and eventually a city council, or, and without a context of a plan, a comprehensive plan? Or are we going to come up with a comprehensive plan and then, you know, try to respond to the petitions from the community to put things in there that are consistent with that plan? In other words, what comes first is, I guess, a question that I am bringing to this commission and the rest of the city of DeKalb. I'm a strong proponent that we have to come up with bigger, comprehensive plans, well-thought-out, professionally, professional input into them and so on and so forth. Thank you very much.
No, that's okay. Can I just kind of?
Yeah, go for it.
And I will say, I absolutely agree with you. I would love to find a way to invite people and businesses to the South Side with incentives to do something more independent, but nevertheless, since Eagles left, since Sullivan's has left, we ended up with Laundromat, thank God Leavens is still there, and every other business out of there has rotated out and out, so. I absolutely agree with you. I would love to find a comprehensive plan where we can give people the initiative to develop that area, but in the meantime, to leave it dormant, I think is irresponsible.
Yeah, I agree with that, and I think a few times, few meetings ago, we accepted indoor storage facility. And I think a few times, few meetings ago, we accepted indoor storage facility, and then I don't, I don't know if that is ever going to materialize or not. And wasn't my favorite either, but.
Yeah, there was a text amendment to add that use is a special use in the general commercial district. The applicant, the owner, has not applied for the special use for the site at this time, yet.
Yeah, I don't know if there's anything that can be done that people who are actually serious about things can take our time.
But to my point.
No, no, I don't.
No, no, I'm sorry, just to reiterate.
Yeah.
Storage facilities on South Fourth is not going to help the increase of the traffic or the business down there. I mean, it's shut.
Oh, I agree. Well, it's an empty space, right? So it's better it's used for something.
Correct. Anything is better than nothing, at this point. Yes.
It would be nicer if it be better planned. I completely agree.
You bet. As long as it's not K-marked.
K-marked? It's too small.
There aren't any left.
Great dialogue. All right. For anyone that would like to do a motion.
I'll make the motion. Matt's shoes I can't fill, but I'll still make the motion. Based upon the submitted petition and testimony presented, I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission forward its findings of fact and recommend to the City Council approval of a special use permit for a video gaming establishment at the subject site per the conditions as indicated on Exhibit A.
So we have a motion by Buckley.
Second.
Second by Maxwell. Any discussion? There being none, roll call, please.
Jerry Wright. Deborah Neer. Max Maxwell.
Here.
Either yes or no.
Yes or no.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Yep, that's me.
David Castro.
Nope.
Vicky Buckley.
Yes.
Katharina Barbie.
Yes.
Chair Christina Doe.
No.
Motion's approved, three to two.
So the next item for our business is a continued public hearing, which is a petition by Northern Illinois Hotels LLC, represented by Permet Patel and Elmer Larson Incorporated. Owner for approval of zoning map amendment from the LC light commercial district to the PDC planned development commercial district, and approval of a planned development plan for a 2.87 acre site located at the southwest corner of Knowles Avenue South and South Annie Glidden Road. Proposed as a 90-room Home Two Suites by Hilton Hotel and associated improvements. And before I open up, I just want to make a reminder, as I just did with the last one, we are approving zoning map amendment and approval of a planned development plan. And I open it to the petitioners.
Hi, I know a lot of you were here from the last meeting and have a lot to cover, so I kind of just wanted to skip to some hot topics from the last meeting. You know, the biggest hot topic was why we chose this site out of all the sites. And, you know, when you, when you look at a development that costs $11 million, you can be certain that you're going to do your due diligence to check every single site in DeKalb. And I've been doing this for about 15 years, and there's a formula that I use, and in that formula, here's the order of importance, right? Number one is size, size of the lot. If it doesn't fit, nothing else matters, right? I know one of the residents asked, why didn't we build it, or look at the two empty schnocks park, lots on Annie Glidden? Well, one of those lots is one acre in size, and the other one is .86 acres. So this is a 2.87 acre site, so the hotel will not fit on either of those sites. The next thing is price. If the price doesn't fit within the budget, then the project isn't feasible. I've been getting asked a lot, why, why aren't we choosing the travel-in? That seller wants almost double the price for the lot than this, then you got to think about the cost that it takes to tear down that building and dispose of the materials. Now we're looking at prices that are close to downtown Chicago prices, and I can't charge room rates that they do in downtown Chicago in DeKalb, so that makes the project not feasible. Next thing is location. The GM from the Red Roof Inn came and mentioned that you have to be within five miles to have your hotel sign posted on the lodging signs on the interstate. Well, we checked, and on the Illinois Tollway, it's actually three miles, right? So you have to be within a certain distance. Transient traffic, traveling down an interstate, makes up about 15 to 20 percent of a hotel's business. If people are driving down the highway and they're too tired to keep driving, they want to take the exit and go to the first hotel. They don't want to drive seven miles into the city. The next one, which is probably the biggest thing, is Hilton approval. Hilton has to approve the site. You can't just pick a site and take it to them, they have to approve it. One of the sites that actually the city sent us was, which I've looked at, is at the border of DeKalb and Sycamore, next to the hospital. And unfortunately, Hilton did not approve that site. We gave them two to three sites, and this was the only site they approved. So if it's not going to happen on this lot, then the hotel's not going to get built in DeKalb, right? The other thing is, is a lot ready for development? Are utilities there, are sewage, drainage? I keep getting asked, why not build on the cornfields right as you enter? Well, they're not ready for development, and the cost and the time it would take, then we can't build the project. Another hot topic was impact of property values. So we hired RVG Commercial, and they ran an MLS report of prices of houses sold in the Knowles subdivision, 2014, March of 2014 was when the Hampton was built. Now, if you can see, the median and average prices have actually gone up since that Hampton was built, and I remember that when the Hampton was built, there were also complaints that property values are going to drop. But that clearly MLS reports show that they did not drop, right? This is a quality hotel that we're trying to build, and, you know, not a mom and pops. The next is, you know, we have to, when we apply for this, we have to have the findings of facts, and one of the things is standards of rezoning, and we have to show how this project meets that. And I want to kind of read through this here. So the first one is, the proposed rezoning conforms to the comprehensive plan or conditions have changed to warrant the need for different types of land use in that area. The proposed rezoning is appropriate considering the length of time the property has been vacant as originally zoned and taking into account surrounding areas' trend in development. Well, the 2005 comprehensive plan for that, for this lot, is recommends the subject site for commercial use. It's been zoned for commercial use for 20 years, right? This, this site's been vacant for 20 years as well. The development of this site with the proposed hotel use meets the intent of the comprehensive plan, the trend of the development in the surrounding area, and the standards of the SAGRC overlay district. The development will also continue to provide the foundation for future commercial developments along the Annie Glidden corridor. Number two is, the proposed rezoning conforms to the intent and purpose of the UDO. So the rezoning of the site to the PDC, which is a planned development commercial zoning, will allow the project to comply with the regulations of the UDO except for waivers for building height and a 50-foot buffer area along the west side of the site. The expectations of the buffer area are justified based upon the unique shape of the lot and the environmental constraints on the east side of the property that prohibit the building and site improvements from being located further to the east. The buffer area on the west side will contain additional landscaping beyond the UDO requirements, along with an eight-foot-high privacy fence in order to screen the adjacent residential area. And we've provided six performance incentives to Dan Olson that, that are outlined in the SAGRC, which allow for the 10-foot increase in the height and the increase in the floor area ratio. Number three, the proposed rezoning will not have a significantly detrimental effect on the long-range development in adjacent properties or adjacent land uses. Now, the surrounding area is mostly developed, and the proposed zoning and land use is consistent and compatible with the neighborhood and comprehensive plan. The proposed, number four, the proposed rezoning constitutes an expansion of an existing zoning district that due to the lack of undeveloped land can no longer meet the demand for the intended land uses. The subject property is proposed for, again, PDC planned development, and the PDC will allow the property be used for uses that will be compatible with the surrounding area and the comprehensive plan. Adequate public facilities and services exist or can be provided, that's number five, which existing utilities surround the site, and an engineering plan including stormwater management plan have been reviewed by the city engineer, and they meet the city code requirements. Now, what we're suggesting is a planned development zoning, so we have to show how this project meets all five of these as well. So no planned development would be allowed, which would result in, number one, inadequate or unsafe access to the planned development. So access will be provided off of Knowles Avenue South through an existing cut in the landscape island. I think when this, when the subdivision was originally developed, that that land was always intended for commercial uses, and those cuts in the islands were made for the use for an entryway into that lot. The landscaping in the island will be removed, and new low-growing plantings will be installed, which will improve visibility for motorists. And a connection directly to South Annie Glidden or through the existing Hampton Inn would be unsafe for motorists, would have several engineering challenges, and it's not called for in the comprehensive plan. Number two is traffic volumes exceeding the anticipated capacity, the proposed major street network in the vicinity. Now, we conducted a traffic study in March of 2018, and the study concluded that a traffic signal is not warranted at that intersection with the existing projected traffic volumes. The study also noted no other improvements are required along Knowles Avenue South except for changes to landscaping to improve visibility. Number three is an undue burden on public parks, recreational areas, schools, fires, police, schools, fire and police protection, and other public facilities which serve or propose to serve the planned development. Now, the DeKalb Park District, DeKalb School District, number 428, the DeKalb Police and Fire Department have all reviewed the plans, and none of them have objected. We actually received a letter of support from the Park District today as well. The Fire Department approves of the plan, and the Police Department has indicated that there is little demand for service regarding the adjacent Hampton Inn that is criminal in nature, and none of which involve pedophiles, which was a concern raised last time. The Park District did not indicate any concerns with the hotel's proximity to the adjacent Mason Park, Larson Lake, to the north, or to their property to the south. DeKalb School District was notified requesting their bus schedule relayed to left turns from the Knowles Avenue South onto northbound Annie Glidden Road. The transportation company for their school district called First Student indicated there were very few complaints from the bus drivers regarding this intersection, and the wait times are no different than any other intersection that does not have a signal. The data from the traffic study indicated two left turns by the buses in the morning on South Annie Glidden with wait times of 15 seconds and six seconds. You know, there's, oh, sorry. Number four was the development, which will be incompatible with the intent and purposes of this ordinance. So we're requesting a planned development zoning, which allows the city to approve regulations that will control the zoning, the development, maintenance, operations, and property improvement related issues. The planned development offers the city more control over the project and its future development. And lastly, number five was detrimental impact on surrounding areas, including but not limited to visual pollution. Now, the surrounding area is already fully developed, and proposed zoning and land use is again consistent and compatible with the neighborhood and comprehensive plan. The landscape plan and building renderings were submitted that meet the requirements in the UDO approval for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Now, since our last meeting, we've, we've made changes to both our landscaping plan and our site plan, based on all the city staff's recommendations and input from the residents as well. It's a little blurry, but. So a couple of things we've done here is, we removed the left-turn lane going out of the hotel, so none of the guests will ever have to go into the subdivision. They'll never get past the West Island. We're also going to put a no-left-turn sign at that location as well. We've removed the eight parking spots. We've actually had to put two parking spots back where Dan's pointing. We've also moved the dumpster to the south property line. We've increased the fence size from six feet to eight feet, made it a wide composite fence. We added additional landscaping across on that borderline as well, as you can see here, beyond what's required, just to provide adequate screening as well. You know, one of the Park District's requests was to add native prairie plantings along the east side, and we've actually went beyond what they requested and did the entire east side as well. Now, we've, you know, we've spent, we've spent some time with the city developer in Hilton as well to change the look and color of the outside building so it meets the requirements and actually looks, you know, pretty as well. Now, I understand that, you know, this lot's always been commercial. There's a lot of things that could come into that location, right? A restaurant, maybe a coffee house, another strip mall. Most of those things, it's commercially zoned private lot. So most of those things will either impact traffic volume more than the hotel will, but they're also not going to bring in $350,000 a year of tax revenue to the city, with $205,000 of that real estate property taxes, where $140,000 of that goes towards the school district without any undue burden on the school district, right? We're also going to create 30 jobs. This also helps entice other businesses to come consider DeKalb as one of their locations because now we're providing quality rooms that go beyond the 80 rooms that the Hampton has. And lastly, just, you know, just want to mention that we're not asking for any TIF money, we're not asking for any tax abatements. We're using local banks to fund this project as well. This is a hotel that offers a service that DeKalb does not currently have. We have a letter of support from the Chamber of Commerce, from the Park District, no objections from the Police and Fire Departments as well. So I had to ask, thank you.
Thank you. City?
Thank you. You have an updated staff report in your packet, so I won't go over all the details kind of summarized from the last time and what's been presented, an update since the last hearing in July. Again, the comp plan calls for commercial here. The zoning is light commercial, they're requesting rezoning to planned development commercial. The applicants indicated a need for this type of hotel in the area. There was a market study done, and I provided that on your front of you tonight. The summary's on page 37, indicating that the hotel is market justified and warranted in the DeKalb market, if you want to take a look at that. So there's definitely a need. We also hear this from NIU, from other businesses, that there's a need for this type of hotel in the DeKalb area. As noted before, the property taxes generated are estimated to be over $200,000 per year. Hotel motel tax, hotel motel tax estimated to be roughly between $140,000 and $150,000 per year. The planned development commercial zoning will give the city more flexibility, more control over the project and the development of the site compared to something that would come in under a permitted use in the light commercial district, or even if it came in as a special use, which it is in the light commercial district. Again, there's corridor standards in the South Annie Glidden Road Corridor Overlay Zoning District, which covers this whole corridor, east and west, and those are provided in the past, and are also in your packets again, and they're meeting those requirements. The initial hearing on The initial hearing on the 18th was continued to tonight. There was some additional, a lot of comments from the public. There was some, the plans need to be revised by the applicant. Update on that, the plans have been revised plans submitted, they've been reviewed by staff. We didn't have a chance to get comments in by the packet deadline of Friday, but an update is comments, there's only a few minor comments remaining from our city engineers reviewed the plans along with staff. The Fire and Police have reviewed it, approved it in the past already in the initial submitted, and there's only minor comments remaining and once the comments are addressed, they're not going to alter the site layout at all. Park Districts responded that they approved of the revised plans too. They asked for native plantings around the detention area and a means of access across the property in the future to their property just between the site and the Hampton Inn. They own a little strip of land. They need a means of access there for maintenance, which they currently do through the current owner, and they like to maintain that in the future so that can be developed in the, through an easement or development agreement if approved. There's been a lot of comments and mentioned in July 18th meeting regarding why the hotel's not being considered for other locations. What we want to emphasize is the commission needs to look at this site and if it meets the standards or not. We can't look at what other sites it may go at. The request is for this property only and we need to look at the findings of fact for the rezoning and plan development if it meets that or not. As mentioned before, looking at the site itself, the plan, there's a 50-foot buffer area between, in the plan development, between commercial and residential zoning, so of course it's residential to the west. The 50-foot area is pretty much comes to the edge of this landscape island here and as noted before, the applicants removed parking spaces from that area. They've added, doubled the amount of landscaping, added every green in that to increase the screening and also increased the height of the fence from six feet to eight feet and changed it to more of a composite fence, earth toned composite fence to add more screening there. So, they will have part of the drive, there's got to be maintained access around the hotel for emergency access, and they'll also relocated the trash dumpster at our, the staff's requested it, that further away from the residential, which was right next to it. Now, it's about 90 feet away at the southern end of the site. And then they've added two parking spaces back where the dumpster was. The parking meets the requirements in terms of their RD, RD, the unified divulminors, in terms of number acquired and number invited, they do meet that requirement. They've added some additional landscaping also too at their request along the Knolls Avenue frontage to screen a little bit better some shrubs up there to screen better the residents to the north. They've also added some landscaping up around the building and also to the east of the entrance. And again, they've met the Park District's request to have native plantings around the detention area on the eastern part of the property. In terms of access into the site, they are proposing the existing area on Knolls Avenue And they will have a right turn only out there with a sign, so no cars turn left. They're also taking the existing landscaping out of the island. They'll have a left turn lane and they're going to replant it with low-growth shrubs. There will be a few shade trees, but they'll be high enough so you can see the visibility improved quite a bit through there, which is needed. In the South Annie Glynn Road Corridor Standards, there's a max floor ratio of .4. They're proposing roughly about .47. The, that corridor standards allows an increase of .10 to the floor ratio if you meet six performance standards out of, I think, 10 or 12 listed, and they provide a document showing how they're meeting those standards. That's all goes to the maximum building height that's allowed to increase by 10 feet if you can meet those performance criteria also. I want to know too on the building height, is this a small part of the building in terms of the rooftop equipments going over the 45 feet? In the commercial zoning districts, you are allowed increased setback or if you have an increased setback in the building, you're allowed additional building height, which they do meet that too, but they are officially requesting a waiver on that. In terms of the building, as mentioned, the masonry or the architecture, we've worked with them regarding the architecture, trying to increase amount of masonry on the building, which they've done. We're still working with them on that. We're looking for a little more earth tone colors on the ephes, the drive it and the strip on the elevation that faces east or Annie Glynn Road, so looking for commission feedback on that if you'd like to comment on that. It's one of the conditions that they do change that color scheme a little bit on there. In terms of, as mentioned before, they submitted full engineering plans and that's been reviewed, a stormwater management report reviewed by a city engineer. There's no waivers requested, they're meeting those requirements. There's a few minor comments remaining in terms of the review and the condition will be they have to address all those before the council takes any action on it. As mentioned, the Park Districts reviewed the plan and they commented regarding more native plantings. They've also submitted a letter which come up later regarding, they have no concerns regarding the proximity of this hotel to their park across the street. Traffic study was done, as mentioned, complete in March. There's a summary that was in the report last time, summarizing that again. Signal ward analysis was conducted on the intersection, South Annie Glynn and Knolls Avenue South and it's shown that there was, traffic signal was not warranted with existing traffic volumes and the projected traffic volumes from the proposed hotel. Of course, our city engineers reviewed that and agrees with the findings in the report. The capacity analysis and studies also showed that the critical movements at the intersection are projected to operate at a good level of service under the existing stop sign control. No other improvements are required on Knolls Avenue beyond what they showed with the turn lane and also the changes to the landscaping to improve the visibility. Also, in the important to note, these Annie Glynn Road corridor standards has a minimum distance between access points to Annie Glynn Road of 660 feet. So, and the distance between Knolls Avenue South and the access to Hampton Inn right now is about 700 feet, so there's no room for an access between, it wouldn't meet that standard. It'd be dangerous intersection if another access, direct access to Annie Glynn Road was added. It's not provided for in the comp plan and was never planned for. A connection from Hampton Inn to the site would have many hurdles related to crossing a floodplain, wetlands, Park District property, the bike path, and as the Hampton Inn site plan was not set up for that connection at all. So, it would have many challenges for that. Matt Baldwin with WBK, our city engineers firm, is here. Matt's, if you have any questions regarding the traffic study at all and our review of it, he's a professional traffic operations engineer and did review the traffic study. We also received accident data from the Police Department for the intersection of Annie Glynn and Knolls Avenue South. That's what's provided in your packet and the, they indicated and summarizing that, based on the low number of accidents at the intersection, they do not feel there's a safety issue with that intersection. The DeKalb School District was contacted regarding the bus schedules just to kind of match up with the traffic study had. They gave us that information. District indicated that there are four buses turn left on South Annie Glynn Road in the morning and two in the afternoon. The data from the traffic study indicated two left turn lanes, turns by buses in the morning on the South Annie Glynn. They have one bus schedule right before 7:00 AM when the traffic study started, so that was not included. The wait times, of course, there's only two of these, but it was 15 and 6 seconds and that data sheet's provided in your packet too. The study also showed one left turn lane on South Annie Glynn in the afternoon with a wait time of five seconds. We also contacted the transportation company for the school district, First Student. Just asked them if any of the bus drivers had complaints or any saw any concerns with that. They said there are very little concerns related to that, no different from any unsignalized intersections in the city. There's going to be a little wait time occasionally and certainly buses are more cautious in terms of turning out in traffic, so, but they didn't indicate any concerns with that particular intersection. As noted too, there's no left turn out of the site onto Knolls Avenue South with a sign and also a payment markings, so people do not go through the residential subdivision. Public safety, as mentioned before, is provided. The police looked at the calls for service at the adjacent Hampton Inn from their opening up until July of this year, and Chief Lowery indicated that there's low demand for service regarding the Hampton Inn that is criminal in nature. Just one note on there, the vacation billing checks, that's a proactive approach by the police and they go out and check it. There's not a response to a call. They do that for all the businesses in the city. And with the plan development agreement, the city can also require no trespass and traffic enforcement agreement. Gives the city a little more authority over the private property in terms of surveillance and tickets. Also, we request in this, if it moves forward with video cameras being set up, that can interrelate into the Police Department so that those can be viewed. This type of requirement we're doing on all our commercial developments, plan development, Cornerstone Plaza DeKalb, others like this, Pizza Hut, requiring this type of surveillance, so. So, the standards of rezoning, the applicant reviewed that regarding the, there's two set of standards, one for the rezoning and one's for the plan development. To summarize those quickly, the applicant went through that, the first one regarding conformance of the comp plan and also the length of time the property's been vacant. Again, the comp plan has commercial for this property, been zoned that way for over 20 years when it was, the subdivision was planted, the Knolls, in 96. There's an existing Hampton Inn next door, 80 rooms, four stories, built in 2014, commercial development north and south along Annie Glynn, of course, residential to the west, northwest, and vacant across Annie Glynn Road. So, the trend in development in terms of any new developments has been mostly commercial along that corridor. The proposed zoning conforms to intent and purposes of the UDO. Again, the, the plan development will give the city more flex, or more control over the project. They do have a waiver regarding the 50-foot buffer area where they're going to have some driveway in there, a couple parking spaces within that area. They've added landscaping, they moved parking out of there, they increased the height of the fence to increase that setback and buffer to the residential area. The zoning would not have detrimental effect on the long-range development or adjacent properties. It was noted or mentioned early by the applicant and provided they've done a study with housing values and they've shown to go up in the area. It's compatible with their comp plan and the surrounding zoning. There's adequate public facilities already exist around the area and they're making all the proper connections. They submitted the engineering plans, a stormwater report that do meet the city codes for those in addition to a traffic study. Standards for plan development, again, talks a lot about the access to the development. Again, the traffic study was provided, they're providing access off Knolls, which was planned for. They're adding a, changing the landscaping there to increase some visibility. No other means of access into the site is feasible. The traffic study indicates that there's no warrant for traffic signal at the intersection of Annie Glynn and Knolls Avenue South. Review has been done by all the public entities, school, park, fire, police, and they've all have approved of the project. Development won't be incompatible with the surrounding and land uses or zoning. Again, the plan development will give the city control over the future development of the project in terms of making sure that the, it's a hotel over time and doesn't change to some other use that can be put in there. Regarding the length of stays can be put in the standards and all the other development requirements that we choose to put in, can be put in there. Citizen response and comments, received several at the initial hearing, and those are noted in the report since the July 18th hearing, and those are copied again. We did receive emails from 599 Persimmon Street, Patty Pumpfree, and Jeff Norris at 713 Plum indicating their opposition to the proposal. Those are in your packets, part of the record. Also, a letter from the DeKalb Chamber of Commerce indicating their support for the hotel was received as well as resident John Liskowski stating his support. Those are included also and made part of the record. Also, an email from Steve Brown at 1231 Mason Street regarding the existence of a floodplain on the site, which was noted, of course, in the engineering plans and stormwater report and is being addressed through that and they're meeting all the requirements for that, so they're not providing any development over the floodplain. There's a small area near the entrance, then we'll go over that, but it's in compliance with all city codes and reviewed by a city engineer. Also, received letter from, as I mentioned earlier, the Park District regarding no safety concerns with the hotel across from the existing park to the north, Mason Park and the lake. Also, emails from Steve Noffinger of 1246 Ivy Street noting proposed hotel can be at a different location. Also, just a recent email I did provide also, came in late this afternoon from Candy Flood of 1311 Mason Street objecting to the proposal. And those are all part of the record. So, this project meets the comp plan, it's compatible with their surrounding zoning. There's many benefits to this proposed hotel. The traffic study indicates and the engineering plans that have been submitted, been reviewed, that they're providing adequate stormwater drainage and adequate access to the site. So, the staff's recommendation, as noted in the report, is to recommend approval of the requested rezoning and plan development plan per the standards in Exhibit A and also subject to all the staff comments in Exhibit B. Those have been updated and I provided those updated exhibit. All I did was change the date of the plans, the revised plans that you've seen have been updated in terms of the dates. The Exhibit A lists all the plan development plans, elevations, landscaping, photometric plan, engineering, the layout plan showing the relocated dumpster location, development standards, of course, a lot of development, a four-story, 90-room hotel in compliance with the other regulations of the light commercial district. At the architectural guidelines that were approved with the Hampton Inn, there was a set of standards that had a minimum masonry requirements and other materials that could be on there. We're recommending that be approved for this hotel also. That a no trespass and traffic enforcement agreement with the owner and the video surveillance requirements be approved with the project. And then the two waivers to the UDO are part of the approval regarding the building height and the 50-foot buffer area with the small amount of parking in the access drive in that area. And then the remaining comments, staff comments in the initial letter, July 12th, and then there's an updated letter from WBK Engineering that was on your dais tonight dated August 6th with this, a few remaining comments. The change in the building color, more earth tones in the drive it and the strip on the north or east elevation. Also, the developer covered the cost for a new subdivision entrance sign at the Knolls entrance. There's an older sign at the entrance there, but they're going to modify the landscaping the island. We're recommending the developer cover the cost for a new sign there. And also, the Park District access to the property to the south, if that be put into the development agreement.
Okay, thank you. So, as I open up the public comments, I'm going to, as I did with the last one, read the three items that we got today. Was the Park District letter in our packet or should that be read?
That came in just recently, so that should be, yeah, that came after the last one.
All right. So, this is the letter from the DeKalb Park District. Dear Mayor and City Council, although we are not either, but we still see this, these letters. It has been brought to our attention that the city is considering a permit for the construction of a home to suites by Hilton that would be located on the south side of DeKalb on property near Mason Park. The district has no safety concerns about this development. The district has seen no increase in crime or any other negative effects from the Hampton Inn that is located near the park. As was vote, as was noted in district staff comments that were sent to city staff, the district would like to see prairie and native plantings included in the landscaping plan. These would, would provide ecological benefits and would complement Park District efforts and maintenance of our property in this neighborhood. We are glad to see that the most recent revision of the plan for the site included these suggestions. The district has no concerns about a home to suites by Hilton being constructed at this location in DeKalb. Signed by the Board President Phil Young and the Executive Director Amy Dahl. An email, dear Mayor and City Council. Unfortunately, I've had other things going on and I've not been able to attend the meetings regarding the home to suites proposal. I'm a resident of the Knolls at 1246 Ivy Street and I have concerns about my own property values going down even though I'm on the other side of Mason Park. However, I wanted to give you my perspective as someone who's been a research business traveler for the past three years with Del Monte Foods Incorporated and for the previous seven years with Seneca Foods in Perend. Main label is Libby's. When I'm traveling and spending seven or more days at a hotel, and I do often in the summer months, I'm looking for a hotel that is much closer to the interstate and our restaurants that are not fast food. If I were looking for hotels in the DeKalb area, the proposed location for Home to Suites in Perend and the Hampton location is one that I would not even consider. There are other hotels in the area which are much closer to interstates, better dining choices and even gas stations. I strongly suggest the owners and management for the new Home to Suites Hotel consider other locations, which would allow one to quickly get on other locations, which would allow one to quickly get on the interstate in the morning after breakfast at the hotel. These other potential DeKalb locations too are closer to better restaurants and gas stations in Perend, such as the Peace Road area. Just my thoughts as a research business traveler. Sincerely, Steve Knopfinger. And another email that was received, Mr. Olson. As a resident of the Knowles, I must voice my objection to the proposed Hilton Hotel. I'm not against the hotel, just the location. That space is entirely too small for a four-story building. There's barely enough space for the hotel, not to mention the parking for cars and buses. If this project is approved, you will be degrading one of the better subdivisions in DeKalb. The front entrance to Knowles will be desecrated, not to mention strangers driving through the subdivision. I hope you give consideration to the residents and deny this proposal. I'm sure there's adequate land in DeKalb for the hotel. Thank you for your consideration in this matter. Candy Flood, 1311 Mason Street, DeKalb, Illinois. Okay, and the first speaker request form we have is Stephen Brown. So, just a reminder, when you come to the podium, give your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Steve Brown. My address is 1231 Mason Street, I'm in the second house off the corner, I back up to the park. I will have a fairly good view of the hotel, 45-foot tall. I don't care what you put around it, we're going to see it. One of the first things I want to bring up is everybody keeps comparing this to the Hampton. The Hampton is not the same type of hotel. Years ago, when before the Hampton was built, there was a Candle something Hotel that was trying to come in that was supposed to be an extended stay. They were approved, but they changed their mind. The Hampton is something that if you were driving down the expressway and you're looking for someplace to stay for the night, you would probably stop and find. If you're going to stay at an extended stay hotel, it's going to be something you're looking for. It's going to be something you have planned because you're going to be doing something there that's been planned. You're either a business, you have business at the school, you have business in the businesses in the area, or something like that. These two hotels are nowhere near the same. You're not going to spend a week or so in a Hampton, but you will easily spend a week or so in an extended hotel, or even a month. And somebody says after 28 days, you no longer have to pay a hotel tax, something like that. I heard that before too. Anyways, these are two different hotels. What you can do in one, you won't do in the other. One will a type of, one will attract a certain type of clientele, another will attract a different type. More or less, I heard before that, you know, people that use it, some of the people from the Hampton will probably want to move over and use the home to suites extended stay because they can stay there longer. Okay, so, you're going to have that. One may balance out the other. You talk about hotels in the area, most of your other suite hotels, you have one up on Peace Road by the Farm and Fleet, you have one up by 23 in Bethany, you have Red Roof Inn, you have Baymont, they're all put in areas of commerce. You have easy access to Peace Road, and you can get to the, you can get to the airport, you can get to Monsanto, ideal, some of your bigger companies, you can get to the college. You have much easier access to everything, and you have sit-down restaurants all over. If you come into here, you have to travel through either the main part of town and take a chance of catching the train, or even if you go through the side street, you can catch the train. You have to go through subdivisions. You don't have easy access anywhere, so I don't understand why somebody would just say, "Well, I'll go there and I'm not going to go here." And the other thing is, he says the Hilton turned down other places. When I looked at home to suites and, they're absolutely exploding. If you go on their website, under proposal, proposed units, they have at least 55 due to open with the next month to a year. This is, this is just like a freight train taking off and they're just sprouting up anywhere. But all the ones I looked at, and I looked at probably 20 or 25, none of them, can you put that back up there, please, the overhead view?
Which one?
Or even this? None of them will overlook the house. I mean, Mr. Gorham there, he's going to have to wake up in the morning, and that's going to be directly over his house. My neighbor to the south of me is going to get up and that is going to be directly over her house. You've got a playground sitting there full of kids. I don't care if the Park District says that it has no safety concerns. If you're a parent, you have a safety concern. You don't know who's staying at that, that is a extended stay hotel. There are concerns all over, there are traffic concerns. I leave my house every morning at approximately 6:30, maybe 22. And yes, there are days I can pull straight out. There are other days I'll be there a couple minutes, okay. Coming home at night and getting out at night, that's a much more difficult proposition because you have much more traffic. When you did your traffic study, was there anything going on at the convo center or at the college? Because when there is, you do not take that exit to get onto Annie Glen Road, you go around. You're not going to get out, unless you're going to go south. I don't know what, what people call traffic experts. If you want to be an expert, come there and stay there for a little while and see what it takes. And the thing about home prices, could we put that up for a minute? That was pretty interesting. I mean, in 20, in 2014, we had just gone through the crash, and home prices pretty much had bottomed out for everybody. There were quite a few homes, too many to count, in, even in the Knowles, that had been foreclosed on. So, it has taken that many years to go up, which has been what, from 165 to 175? That's not a huge increase. I guarantee you, that had nothing to do with the Hampton being there. And who knows, if the Hampton had not been there, maybe that would have gone up a little quicker. We don't know. If you put this in, sitting right over the top of homes, taking away the safety of people and their children, we'll see how quickly you can sell a house and what happens to home prices. Right now, they are beginning to go up. People are pretty happy when they put their home for sale. That's going to change. Okay. I'm trying not to stay up here all day, but I just, that left turn deal, could you bring that up, please? Okay. You're saying you're only going to have two lanes and Mr. Patel said that you would not be able to turn left out of there? What's going to stop you from turning left? A sign? A sign doesn't stop anybody from doing anything. If you see traffic backing up on Annie Glen there, you're going left, you'll find your way out. If you're going to do that, you're going to have to put something there that makes it darn near impossible for somebody to pull out. And then, if somebody does try to pull out, you're going to have an accident waiting to happen. There are just too many variables in that, that entrance. And I understand, everybody keeps saying that this is zoned light, commercial, and zoned for commercial. Well, I'll tell you what, nobody who lives in this neighborhood would have conceived a four-story hotel. It's, it's, it's not in your mind. You would think a 7-Eleven, something small, a gas station, something like that, daycare center, whatever, a restaurant, a four-story hotel, you would never dream of. And the Park District, the same Park District that tells you that they don't have any safety concerns, has anybody looked at Larson Lake? It bears the name of one of the people that wished to be part of this? That's a sewer. It's in horrible shape, it's not taken care of. I mean, if the Park District, I don't see how they can make a recommendation on something when they can't take care of what they have. And the reason that you're vacant on the other side of Annie Glen is that's a wetland area. That whole area is basically, I don't have the deal with me, from there, coming through here, along the creek and that, even in the part of the parking lot of the Hampton is considered floodplain. Okay? You have to have a permit, they will have to draw a permit, and they'll get it because they can comply. But that is floodplain. You've already built one four-story hotel on an area that really shouldn't have something like that, and now you're thinking of adding a second one. I don't know about, you know, jobs for people, I don't know what they're going to pay. I'm willing to bet you, most of what they're going to pay is going to, not going to support anybody, and that's all. And the biggest concern we're going to have is if this plan is approved, and it's something the zoning committee should think about, is how in God's name are you going to construct that without somebody getting hurt, without destroying that road? I mean, you're talking about tractor trailers bringing in equipment that would be anywhere from 60 to 80 foot long, weighing as much as 180,000 pounds, for the kind of equipment they have? I don't know, do, is anybody here part of the builder? Are you going to have to drive pilings in to support the hotel? So, you, okay. Well, you are going to have to probably compact in areas. Okay, what kind of damage are you going to do to Mr. Gorham's house? I mean, you've only, you've only got 50 feet. And really, when you're doing that, you only have 50 feet. I know what a compactor sounds like and what it does. It's his foundation and the foundation of any of the houses close by could suffer. Go ahead.
You'll have to go to the podium, though. We don't have the other microphone.
I'm just saying...
You can answer.
Before I move forward, can you, why don't you go to the podium?
If you, if you could address the, yeah, please. We don't have the other microphone.
It's up there.
Oh, is it?
I'll let Pramit comment on most of these comments anyway, but as far as a compactor running down the road and hurting a house, they build streets and redo streets in front of thousands of homes with compactors and they don't do any damage.
Good, thank you.
Compacting for a house and compacting on an area that you're building on are two different things, and I'm sure he knows that too. Okay. I want to thank you for your time. There are other people here that want to talk, so...
Thank you. Jill Skinner, did you say the microphone is up there?
The remote's up there on podium if someone needs to use it.
The microphone?
Yeah.
Could we have it with them, just in case they need to answer any questions?
You can grab it, it's right up there.
Thanks, just in case. The next one is Jill Skinner.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. My name is Jill Skinner, live at 1279 Mason Street, which is approximately five houses from the proposed location of the proposed hotel. I'm going to primarily address the comments related to the standards of rezoning, which is Article 3 on the staff report, beginning on page 6, dated July 13th and updated August 3rd. So, this will reference some of the issues raised by the petitioner earlier in the evening, and some of the comments raised by the city staff in responding to these standards. And as I understand it, these standards must be met in order for the commission to approve the petition for rezoning. So, the first one where it says, "The proposed rezoning conforms to the comprehensive plan or conditions have changed to warrant the need for different types of land uses in that area." The first comment by the city staff was that the 2005 comprehensive plan recommends the subject site for commercial uses. My understanding is that when you use the term "commercial" uses in this context, it covers a number of different types of commercial uses. The most restrictive is known as neighborhood commercial. The next is light commercial, and that's what we have presently zoned here. Then comes commercial, and then the PD, commercial, plan development, commercial. You know, the comments certainly by the petitioners throughout this evening, just keep referring to the fact, and also in the staff report, that this is an area for commercial use. But there is a reason why in the, in the documentation, "commercial" is defined in a number of different ways, as I indicated, neighborhood light, commercial, and PD commercial. So, this was zoned light commercial. There must have been a reason for that. When this was originally platted out, it was primarily viewed as a residential subdivision and a very nice, higher-end subdivision for the city of DeKalb. The housing at that time was constructed, as I understand it, excuse me, at a rate of value of $250,000 to $300,000. They certainly don't hold their value of that right now after the recession. But it was done for a reason, excuse me. So, the light commercial was anticipated to be exactly what was referred to, I think, by Mr. Brown in his comments. It's something that any homeowner, prospective homeowner is going to consider when looking at buying property in the Knowles, in that particular area. Light commercial, what one envisions is a one-story building with things that would appeal to the neighboring residents. Dry cleaners, maybe an eye doctor's office, something of that nature, typically Monday through Friday, possibly Monday through Saturday, 9 to 5, 9 to 6 hours, not something that's open 24/7. You know, if you go back and look at something similar, and I was trying to come up with something here in the city of DeKalb that was similar to what we're talking about here, and I couldn't come up with that quickly, but I'm familiar with an area over by Geneva, for those of you who might have some familiarity, at Kesslinger and Randall Road. And there's a subdivision there called Pepper Creek, and that was built a little earlier than, than the Knowles. But if you're familiar with it, there is a one-story building there that is at the entrance to that subdivision off of Kesslinger. And over the years, what's been in there are things like dry cleaners, eye doctor's offices, things that are the Monday through Friday or Monday through Saturday, 9 to 5 type businesses. That's what people expect when they go and buy in a residential subdivision that has an area that's been zoned light commercial. They do not anticipate that it's going to be rezoned to something that permits a commercial use, such as a four-story hotel. So, I respectfully disagree with the concept of what the, what the staff is talking about in terms of commercial uses. This was zoned light commercial for a reason at the time that the subdivision was platted out. They then go on to say that the site has been vacant for over 20 years, but yet, there's no reference to whether or not there's ever been any attempt to develop that area for light commercial. You know, has there ever been any efforts to do that? They just simply say, "Well, it's been vacant, and so therefore, apparently, nobody wants to put light commercial in there, so now we've got to rezonate and put in a four-story hotel." So, again, there's a reason why it was light commercial, and the fact that it's been vacant for 20 years is not necessarily relevant to the process to determine whether or not the standards of rezoning have been met. Further on down, it says that the proposed hotel use meets the intent of the comprehensive plan. Well, if, you know, the comprehensive plan talks about commercial zoning in general, but again, there was a reason why this was zoned light commercial and not commercial. There was a reason for that because this was primarily going to be a residential subdivision of higher-end homes for the city of DeKalb. And that, I think, is an important factor to determine that the intent of the comprehensive plan was not to have this be a commercial building, but rather, light commercial as it was zoned. Then we'll move on to the second standard, "The proposed rezoning conforms to the intent and purpose of the unified development ordinance." Well, the city staff notes in its report that there are certain waivers that are allowed. Well, there always are certain exceptions to rules, and sometimes perhaps those are appropriate, but I beg to differ that in this instance, it is appropriate. Because changing building height for a building from what most of us would anticipate would be a one-story building in a light commercial zone, to a four-story building in a commercial zone is a substantial difference. It's not an insignificant difference at all. Additionally, the 50-foot buffer along the west side of the site. If you are taking a light commercial area and you are turning it into a commercial zone, a 50-foot buffer is not going to provide any protection, particularly to that next-door neighbor, but to all of us who live in that area. You know, buffered zones are only as good as what they actually are able to accomplish. There's been a lot of reference to the Hampton Inn, and I know there was some controversy about the Hampton Inn when it was put in, but that's further down and away from this particular residential area. It also has a very natural buffer, if any of you have driven past there, there's a huge buffer zone by virtue, not because it's man-made, but by virtue of that's nature-made. And that's what's provided some protection for the homeowners in this subdivision. We won't have that kind of thing. They can put up as many native... They can put up as many native plants and fences as they want to, and as are proposed in their plans, and it's not going to provide any kind of buffer for the residential area, particularly the neighbors that live immediately adjacent to the west, and actually for those of us who live more to the north, we are gonna be able to stand in our yards or at the end of our driveways, and, and what we're gonna see is a four-story hotel, no matter what kind of buffer system you create, and no matter what kind of plantings that they are put there. So again, the proposed rezoning does not conform to the intent and purpose of the unified development ordinance, because when you require substantial waivers, requiring those kind of substantial issues, I don't believe that it does conform with the intent and purpose of that document. Number three, "The proposed rezoning will not have a significantly detrimental effect on the long-range development of adjacent properties or adjacent land uses." The city staff goes on to say that the surrounding area is mostly developed. No, it's not mostly developed, particularly south of, of the Knowles on Antiglen, and more significantly, the development that they're referring to, again, is residential. Now typically, when people use the word, laypeople in particular, use the word "development", we usually think in terms of commercial development. This is not a commercially developed area. They are proposing to put this hotel in essentially what is a residential subdivision. "The proposed zoning and land use is consistent and compatible with the neighborhood and the comprehensive plan." This was, again, I'm repeating myself, but it's, it's an important fact that the petitioners don't seem to ever refer to. This was zoned light commercial for a reason. And people who have bought in this subdivision should have some basis for relying on that when this property was originally platted out and was zoned light commercial, that that would be respected. So again, you know, my position would be that it's not standing within the, the intent of the, of the plans and compatible with the neighborhood. A four-story hotel in a commercial, a rezoned to a commercial development is not compatible with a residential neighborhood. Further down in that paragraph, it says, "The buffer area existing on the west side", again, that buffer area that's being proposed is not significant enough that's gonna provide any kind of protection for that residential neighborhood. Four, "The proposed rezoning constitutes an expansion of an existing zoning district that due to a lack of undeveloped land can no longer meet the demand for the intended land uses." Again, the surrounding area is a residential neighborhood, it's not a commercial area, and that's really important to understand under that particular factor that has to be looked at. When they're talking about surrounding area, we're not talking, they, they, they keep referring to that this is a commercial area. For any of you who are familiar with or have had the opportunity to drive up and down that section of Antiglen, where this is being proposed is not a commercial area. To the north, it's residential. To the east, it's mostly wetland and residential. To the south, you eventually come to the Hampton Inn. But to say that the entire surrounding area is commercial in nature is just not accurate and not accurately assessing what that neighborhood is. Five, "Adquate public facilities and services exist or can be provided." Again, I know there's been a lot of talk about traffic studies, and I think Mr. Brown made a significant point when he said, "When was this traffic study done?" For those of us who live there, we know there are times when it is very, very difficult to get in and out of that subdivision entrance onto Antiglen, whether you're going north or south. It's especially difficult when we're talking about weekends involving football games, events at the convocation center, events surrounding NIU, graduation, and that like. So again, I, I have not conducted a traffic study personally, and I understand that these are professionals doing this, but I do have to question the basis of their data, if they're saying that there is insignificant impact based upon that access. That access was designed to be access to the residential area and potentially the light commercial development there at the entrance, not for a four-story hotel. Then they went on and looked at the standards for the planned development, and in looking at that, again, the issues are the access issue, the traffic volumes, which I've addressed, the issue of undue burden on Poli Beach Parks recreations. I know the statement was made that all these various entities, the park districts and the school districts and so forth, have been consulted. I, I don't get the impression that they're necessarily saying, "Go ahead and build it, and they will come." What they're simply saying is that when they were asked specific questions, they were not raising objections. But I don't think it's appropriate to, to suggest that they are necessarily in support of this development, and those factors really should not have any impact on whether or not this commission decides to approve the petition for rezoning. Once again, the development, which, which will be incompatible with the intent and purposes of this ordinance, again, there was a reason why this was built, was zoned light commercial and not commercial, and that should be upheld. The city should continue to be sensitive to that, and the fact that that is a fully-developed residential neighborhood and continues to be one of the fine neighborhoods in, in DeKalb. And then ultimately, the detrimental impact in surrounding area, including but not limited to visual pollution. I don't know what can be more visually polluting than a four-story hotel in a residential neighborhood. There, as I said earlier, there is not enough landscaping, there are not enough fences, there's nothing that can be done that would prevent that hotel from being very much polluting, you know, the, the neighborhood. I mean, there's no question about it, and if you've walked that area, if you walk down Mason Street, which is where I live, I'm gonna be five houses away from that, I'm gonna stand in my yard, and that's what I'm gonna see. Now, when I look out, I can't see much of the Hampton, which is further down Antiglen Road. Most of us in the Knowles, unless you're a little bit closer off of, I believe it's Smallness Street, can't. And the reason for that, again, is the natural buffer zone. Nature has thankfully provided our neighborhood with a natural buffer zone with the tall trees and vegetation that has grown, and particularly in the last few years. The buffer zone that's proposed under this plan is not gonna provide that, and therefore they simply cannot show that there is no detrimental, detrimental impact in the surrounding area, including but not limited to the visual pollution. You know, there's a lot of facts and figures thrown out, and I have great respect for what the city has done. I know I sat and met with Mr. Olson yesterday, he was kind enough to sit down and explain some of this to me, because most of us in this room are laypeople. You know, we don't know the ins and outs of these things, and it's a lot of material to absorb. When he was speaking earlier, you know, he had all sorts of things to say, and, you know, I'm sitting there, and, and a lot of it I don't understand, and that's why we rely on you, as the commission, to be able to, to go through all that and really have a, a good understanding. But in the end, you know, in the end, I believe that they have not met their burden of showing why this should be rezoned. They have not met the burden of, of those standards of rezoning, and respectfully disagree with the conclusions and the recommendations made by the city staff in this instance. I asked Mr. Olson that question, you know, when these kinds of things come in, you know, are you just simply rendering an opinion, I think is the way I put it, and I'm, I'm not quoting him directly, but, but our discussion basically was, they worked to try and make this work. And perhaps that is their role, but if that is their role, then we have to, as, as residents here in the city of DeKalb, we have to look at you to be sensitive to the needs of the neighborhood when this, this proposal is being made. We all have made a commitment to live here in the city of DeKalb. A lot of us could choose to live elsewhere. My husband and I just moved from the country south of DeKalb into town a couple of years ago, and we had that very real choice of going here or Sticamar, and we made the commitment to come to DeKalb. And because of that commitment, and because of the investment we've made, and our neighbors have made, and we did that knowing that that part of the Knowles subdivision was zoned light commercial and not commercial, you know, we are asking the commission to, to take that in consideration, in addition to recognizing that there are certainly disputed factors here, and that the petitioner cannot meet the burden to show that they meet the standards of rezoning, and therefore the petition should be denied. Thank you.
Just a quick follow-up, if I could, on a few of these. Just for clarification, the light commercial district is intended to be, according to the UDO, adjacent to Collector Streets and Artillery Streets, and is designed to accommodate the retail and limited service needs of a larger consumer population. I gave you a list of permitted and special uses in the light commercial district. The maximum height in the LC district is forty-five feet regardless of the use. The fifty-foot buffer area is particularly for the planned developments. In the light commercial district, it's only a fifty-foot building setback, and there would be a ten-foot parking setback, so, so the planned development, that fifty-foot buffer is more restrictive than this, the straight light commercial zoning. The traffic study notes, yeah, there's gonna be events in the area, NIU, other sporting events, other activities, where there's gonna be a lot of traffic in every intersection, a lot of other access points are impacted, there's gonna be a lot of wait, so. In studies, you don't base improvements required based on the special events, it's based on traffic over time. So obviously, when there's big events in town, a lot of intersections are backed up and a lot of issues, not only this one, so. So there's a few things to clarify that.
Dawn Flippin?
My name's Dawn Flippin, 601 Larson Lane. I have a lot of the same concerns as the people that came before me, but I think the one thing that, we keep discussing the building itself, but the other thing that I don't know that has been mentioned, I keep hearing wetland and floodplain, and what is not being discussed is how much laptop is gonna be added? And that is parking, then, so you have cars that are gonna be parking there, you know, and they leak fluids, you have to salt that in the winter. Where's all that gonna go? We had, that, that's going then into those wetlands and floodplains. And somebody brought up Larson Lake, and it's stagnant, it's the best word I can come up with. And I don't know that the environmental impact to the, the land right there is being considered as well. And I have the same concerns with traffic. The traffic study, if Northern wasn't in session, if that was March and that was their spring break, yeah, you're gonna make a left really quick. But if it, if, I, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm frustrated with this. You know, there were a lot of concerns brought up at the last meeting, and a lot of the answers that the developers came back with were conflicting in nature, because you had one developer that stood up and said that we need this location because of the corporations, and they listed 3M and Monsanto and, and Nestle and Target, but then another gentleman stood up and said, "We need it there for Northern." And so I don't feel that there's a straight answer as to why this was chosen. The first gentleman that spoke brought up the fact that he had looked around, and, and it just doesn't seem to fit with the neighborhood. There's comparisons that keep being made to the Hampton Inn for this, and the Hampton didn't do this, and the Hampton didn't do this. And I don't know that that's a fair comparison, because the Hampton is not an entrance in the subdivision. It is further back, it is completely set back, as it was just stated. It is separated from the subdivision by that tributary, whatever it is. So it is, it's completely offset. So I don't know that it's a fair comparison to say, "The Hampton didn't do this," or "The Hampton's traffic did this," because it's not, it's not the same at all. It doesn't have people coming into the subdivision. When they say that they're gonna put up a sign so that somebody can't make a left turn, that's great. It didn't work in the Schnucks parking lot, the sign finally came down. And you, you are limited in terms of forcing a right turn out, because as was stated at the last meeting, fire and emergency vehicles may need to make that left turn. And so you don't necessarily have the ability to force a right turn, because those big rigs can't make that, that left if you're forcing a right. So I just think there's considerations here, and I still feel that it's being shoehorned somewhere that it really doesn't belong. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Cargill.
Good evening, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Dave Cargill, address is 6820 Mill Road, Rockford, Illinois. I will be quick tonight, just a few questions. I'm curious if the petitioners are involved anyway in the Home Two Suites going up in Loves Park, Illinois? No relation financially or, okay. Okay, and were the petitioners, were you guys involved with the Hampton at the time of construction? Involved in the construction of the Hampton Inn?
Yes.
Okay, okay, okay. I represent the men and women of IBW Local 364, construction electricians, technicians. I just wanted to be on the record, and, you know, should this get to the city council, I'm sure we'll be discussing it more. We had, we had issues when the Hampton Inn was constructed. There was no interest in using, or even entertaining, the use of local, local men and women that live right here, and I hope, should this proposal go forward, that we can amend that. So, that's all I got, thank you.
Thank you. I know, I'm not gonna say this right, I'm sorry. Dennis Mabelski? I am so sorry if I don't pronounce that correctly.
The late, the last two women that came up there, they, and Steve Brown covered like my bases, but what I was concerned about, the light commercial, a ninety-room hotel on that piece of property is not light commercial. I don't think. With the one entrance, where all those, if something happens, all those people gotta come out, plus the subdivision's gonna be using that entrance way, and then the fire or police have to come in that way? That ain't gonna happen. You're making a tremendous mistake if you put that thing there with that one entrance, and if something happens, I hope you guys are liable for it. And that's all I gotta say.
Can you state your address really quick, please?
1220 Knowles Avenue South. I'm on the fifty-foot embankment where I'm gonna see this monstrosity. If it's such a great place, why don't you put it right between Marathon and the Walgreens? Same size piece of property. You got three entrances, you got an alley by the train track, you got a, by the bank, there's another entrance, and right next to Marathon, there's a street, and then you got Lincoln Highway. There's four sides to that piece of property, why can't you put it there? Then you won't be interfering with all these people in our subdivision, all the kids. Everybody's, that's gonna be involved looking at it. Even the resource bank at the corner has two entrances, and there's only like five people that work there. Thank you.
Christine Sokolowski?
Good evening. My name is Christine Sokolowski, and I live at 1230 Mason Street. I am a mother of five. I am also a small business owner. We moved into that property back in 2013, and we did our due diligence to find out what kind of property that empty lot was before we made our choice to move into the Knowles subdivision. My biggest hope was that they would put in a daycare, but, you know. Okay, so my, my biggest concern here is traffic volume. It was stated in, in their comments here, number two, the traffic volumes exceeded the anticipated capacity for it to be directly siphoned off of Antiglen and into the hotel. If you can bring up... I can use this picture?
It, could you grab the microphone, though?
Okay, here we go. So, I go in and out of this particular part of the subdivision all day long. So the first island that's closest to Antiglen, does anybody know exactly how many feet long that particular island is? Because my, my first consideration is if they're going to be using that first turn-in to go into our subdivision, and then that second turn-in to go into this particular hotel. The, the, the fact that it's exceeded the volume of traffic to not go directly into the hotel, but just to use that one and to turn around and go in, that there's a very real possibility that there can be some congestion there, a lot of congestion. I don't think that that particular island is even long enough to hold how many exceeded anticipated capacity that could be, and one of my biggest concerns, of course, is my children. Two of my children are medically fragile and have needed emergency services. So the closest entrance for emergency services to reach my home, which is less than two-hundred-and-fifty feet away from the front door of this particular establishment, is to get through that opening to my children when they're in need of medical care, immediate medical care. If the volume is exceeding the anticipated capacity, how much of that volume is gonna be going? much of that volume is going to be going into our subdivision, into the closest entrance into my home to reach my children in case of a medical emergency, that may potentially block the ability for emergency medical team to get to them. So, that's my first concern. Not to mention the possible construction equipment that will be there for, I don't even know how long it takes to build a hotel, but I'm assuming a significant eight to 12 months. There will be machinery that could potentially be sitting on Knowles Avenue or close to Knowles Avenue that can restrict the view and possibly cause some kind of accident should somebody or emergency vehicle be trying to get into the subdivision. And traffic coming around that curve there can't see them coming. I don't know, again, I know that other people have stated that the traffic study, when was it done? Was it when school was in session at Northern?
It was done in mid-February on a Thursday. And the traffic study was released by the developer in March.
Okay, well, I, I don't, I've, like I said, I've lived here since 2013. Thursdays and Fridays are a much higher volume than a couple of buses pulling in and somebody waiting three seconds. Just today, trying to get out of that subdivision and turn left onto Annie Glidden, which I would be going towards most of the restaurants and other activities that people would want to go to, would frequent if they're going to be staying at this hotel. It took me three minutes to turn out. So, I'm not, and I mean, that isn't, that isn't rare. That happens quite often, especially when I'm, it's always when I'm trying to get somebody to like OT, you know, when it's like, okay, I got to get there. If you could possibly, I'm going to switch gears here. The, the planned trees and hedges, I don't suppose any of those trees or hedges are 45 feet tall. No? No. I was hoping it would just completely block everything that I would be looking at and potentially blocking people from looking directly into my own windows, seeing as it's only 200 feet away. So, I do still find a huge issue with the vicinity of the hotel to the park. The difference between this hotel and the Hampton is that, again, it's an extended stay, and therefore it's somewhere for people to live in transition. Should they sell their house here and be moving there, or sell their house somewhere else and be moving here to DeKalb, hopefully. So, the fact that there's no background checks done for people who are going to be staying there an extended period of time concerns me, especially with four of my children being under the age of five. Home prices, if they could bring that up as well. Okay, thank you. 2014 is not when the Hampton opened. It was 2015. And if you notice, the maximum sold, 225, 2016 went down to 184. The minimum went...
Can you go to the microphone? I'm sorry.
Sorry. The, the maximum sold, 225, that's when the Hampton opened. The next year went down to 184. If you look at median, 173 to 170. If you look to the average sold, 167 to 160. Our property values did go down. You can't sit here and say that over, you know, the next year, whoop-de-doo, the median got 5,000 extra back in, in property value, when the year before we lost three. You can't tell me the property values didn't go down. That, that your own spreadsheet literally shows that they have all gone down. The minimum, 94 to 91 in three years. And then my, my last concern is, is the possible rumor, I haven't exactly done any real research into this, but I heard that if the Home Two Suites doesn't necessarily do the volume or the revenue in which it's projected, that it may be turned into an apartment complex or even possibly Section 8. And I just wanted to know if that can be clarified.
I can clarify that. The, as I mentioned before, the few, few things on the access, the, the islands, as I mentioned before, the landscaping will be taken out. They're going to put low-growth landscaping in. There's a turn lane on westbound that meets our city engineers' requirement. We requested the small turn lane into the site that is adequate to accommodate any traffic that will be stacked up to go in there, which for a hotel, the traffic is throughout the day. So, our expert engineers have looked at this, and this is an adequate access into the site, what the plans show. Regarding the development agreement, we can put in restrictions regarding length of stay and that it remain a hotel for, that it can't be some other use. So, that rumor is very untrue and totally inaccurate.
I, I guess I just, I'm a little concerned with, with the vagueness of, that is efficient, that the turn lanes are efficient, or that they're enough for, I mean, I'm not exactly sure what the parameters are.
Yeah, we can have our traffic engineer, Matt Baldwin with WDK, to respond to the, it's up the front, the mic. Go ahead. Go ahead.
My name's Matt Baldwin. I'm from WBK Engineering. We assist the city in reviewing the traffic studies and the site plans for these types of developments. My address is 2013 Allen Drive in Geneva, Illinois. Relative to some of the concerns that were raised, I just jotted some notes to hopefully provide some clarity. So, a turn lane into the site based on the traffic that is the through volume entering the subdivision, and then the turning volume that goes into the site is not actually warranted. That was a recommendation by us to make sure that there aren't any congestion issues, that we could get traffic out of the way of traffic entering in there, and also that there won't be any rear-end accident concerns from people slowing down to enter the site. So, I'm not, I'd have to see what the actual geometry is, but the recommendations were for that to be approximately 150 in total length between the taper and storage. There's approximately 20 vehicles that enter the site during the peak hours, which are evaluated in the morning, the afternoon, weekend times, and the evening. And 20 vehicles entering there means that approximately one vehicle will come every three minutes, you know, just on average. They will typically not be opposed by a vehicle leaving the site. There's ranges, but depending on the hour, you see anywhere from 20 to 60 cars leaving the site. So, it should be more than adequate. There, we don't expect more than one vehicle to ever be there waiting, and they shouldn't wait for any substantial duration of time being opposed by, as we noted, the residential-only traffic. And then additionally, queuing at the intersection onto Annie Glidden doesn't actually back up past the entrance. It's approximately 240 feet, which we looked at and evaluated. So, we don't anticipate that that would cause anyone to back up in that island area. Let's see. We did evaluate the grading plan relative to the sightlines in terms of looking left. We looked at all the contours to make sure that people would be able to see traffic coming from the west at the entrance, and they will be able to. We recommended that no trees be planted in that area with the recommended proposed grading and contours in order to, to make sure that it's unobstructed view and that it meets site distance requirements. And let's see, the, just to note, the traffic study was completed on a Thursday. Typically, traffic counts are completed on normal week, under normal conditions, between Tuesday and Thursday to make sure that traffic is not deflated. As it can sometimes be on a Monday or a Friday, depending on who's going to work on which days. School wasn't in session. I'm not sure of any special events, but as Dan noted, those aren't always considered in terms of traffic. We're not designing or considering the worst-case scenario. This is a typical scenario. We compared the traffic counts that were provided by KLA, who was the developer's traffic consultant on this one, to the historical IDOC counts, and everything checked where it fell in line. There was no, it wasn't substantially lower. There was nothing that was, that, that didn't meet our expectations in terms of what the traffic should be. So, I hope that provides some clarity. Thank you.
So, I, I would just like to state as a resident of that particular subdivision that I do not believe that their numbers are accurate. I go in and out of that subdivision quite often, and do have to wait sometimes a significant amount of time with cars ahead of me to get through. Yeah, but thank you very much for listening to my concerns.
Thank you.
I was going to be quiet, but, I never cease to be amazed at how smart and articulate the public is. My only complaint with the public is that it doesn't get involved any more than it does. You are, you don't know the power and the strength that you have if you just get up, do your homework, and get up here and speak. You are phenomenally articulate. That's given me courage to get up here yet one more time. When I hear, with my background and my experience in government, which is in a little bit, the world's waiver and rezone and floodplain, the red flags go up. Right away, the red flags go up, because experience has told me that we need to be extremely careful about those things. Whenever we're being asked to waiver or rezone something, we should do that only with the greatest of care. Floodplain, yes, one gentleman mentioned that the property across the way was floodplain. Sure was. Years ago, somebody came before the council and wanted to build houses on stilts on that property. Would you believe? And council very wisely said, "Uh-uh." So, yeah, floodplain is of concern. How much study have we done on that, given this new development? Everybody knows. You don't have to be a rocket scientist or an engineer to figure out that the more you pave, the less absorption there is, and so on and so forth. Okay, comprehensive plan. I don't know how to say this, but when was the last time the city of DeKalb really looked at the comprehensive plan? When was, and with all due respect for what you all do, believe me, I'm a strong advocate of the planning and zoning commission, but you need more experience. You need to really make the time to look at the comprehensive plan and look at its details. You need the time to go out there and really look, get on a bus and travel around some of these areas. How many of you have done that? Has staff afforded you that opportunity so that you could really get a handle on what it is that you are deciding? As one lady said, "We depend on you to scrutinize to the best of your ability," and you're smart folks, by golly, you know, you know how to do that, and we need for you to do that. But we lack experience as a whole, as a group, and that includes staff. And also, with, with all due respect to the engineer, I surely wouldn't want to be an engineer, as bad as I am at math, but you don't live here. We've lost our history of engineering here in this town over the last three, four years. So, you really don't have a good handle. You have to rely in part on their input and the developer's input for your numbers to a degree. The people that I would rely on more are the people that are actually living there and moving in and out of that area on a, on a continual basis. And then, and this one is, what's really going to make you think, your council, Planning and Zoning Committee, there's a history to this development. When this was first brought in, it was going to be considered a Class A Number One residential development. And then, Mr. Larson, you remember this, the tweaking started to happen. And Mason Larson came in and wanted to tweak the plan a little bit, and then a year or so later, wanted to tweak the plan again. That's how we ended up with those townhouses over by the bridge. I'll go to my deathbed, you know, not, not being able to fight that in, in any more than we did. Tried the best we could, but that was jammed down our throats too. And all that, oh, we got to change this a little bit, change that a little bit. Staff, have you looked at the history of how this development has been tweaked and tweaked and tweaked, and now you want to tweak again? And in answer to, forgive me, I, my intention is not to be a mean old witch. That's, I'm just a nice, sweet, little Greek lady. But, you know, staff, it is not your job to make it, whatever it is, work. It is your job to protect and strive for the quality of development that goes on in this community and to protect the taxpayer. That's what your job is. You got to get that straight. And one more thing, with the Park District and the School District and so on, how many times, Chris, have I come up and asked, "Please, let's get a liaison from the Park District and the School District to sit on the Plan Commission to go over some of the same things that not have a voting thing, just to be there so that they are aware of all the details, instead of being fed the details a little bit at a time here and a little bit at a time there." They can't get a good handle on the whole picture if they're not part of the process. Information, transparency, by golly, I'm going to fight to the death to make sure that this committee, community continues to do that. Transparency, guys, don't give up. Keep talking.
And I have brought that up to the mayor. I just want the public to know that. All right. We don't have any further forms. Is there anyone in the audience that did not get a form up here that would like to speak? You can fill your form out after, if you would, please. And we just ask for the forms so we've got the right address and spellings.
My name is Preston Chrisler. I moved into Kalba December 15. One of my concerns was the Hampton, but it was further back, so I said it's fine. I dealt with it. So, but this is too close. My house is right there at Lot, what's that, 146th, right? My house is right, see where we at here? I don't have my glasses on. Right there. My, my address is 1222 Mason. I'm right on the corner. Right, yeah, right there. That's it, right there. Anyway, I'm just going to, all my neighbors have addressed it. That's why I never came up, the same issues. But the only thing I want to say to Mr. Patel here is one of the things he said about the Police Department. The Police Department only responds after a crime is committed. That's too late. It's, it's way too late, though, after that. When they get there, it's too late. The crime has been done. It's been done. That's, that's the, that's the only thing I need to say about that. Yeah. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? We will give another opportunity, but now I want to open it up to the commissioners, and I'm going to start down here.
Just for comparison's sake, you do have an interest in the Hampton or other Home Two Suites, maybe you have knowledge of, what's traffic pattern on an average day? I mean, about how busy are you in the morning? How many are coming and going, just in, in general? I mean, is it a huge influx at once, or is it one here or there?
You can go ahead and go up to the podium. Yeah. With, yeah, without my phone.
My name is Al Hill, and I was a part owner in the Hampton Inn, and we built that particular project. Home Two is designed as a mid-scale Hilton, extended-stay property. And even though they call it extended stay, the truth of the matter is, I think the average stay in a Home Two is like 2.3 days. So, it's, it's really only about one day more than a Hampton, anyway. And the amazing thing is that it's been so well-received across America, as one person mentioned here, they are, a lot of them being built, because last year, Home Two revenue-per-viable room actually passed Hampton. So, now it's a higher-scale hotel even than a Hampton is. So, it's a much-desired one, and a lot of people currently are driving into Aurora to stay, that probably will stay here now. And the, the traffic flow typically, you can't check into your room till about 3 o'clock, anyway, because they have to clean the other rooms out first. So, and I tell people this, it's probably not a whole lot different than what you do when you go to hotels. Usually, you start checking in around 4 o'clock, 5 o'clock. Some come at 6. It really is over about a five-hour period that they come. And on any given night, you're going to have 65 to 75 cars coming over a four-hour period. So, there's only going to be like 15 an hour coming or something like that.
What's the morning look like, leaving?
Okay, I'm going to, please, they were respectful of you. Please be respectful of them so that we can hear them. We have to be able to hear everything that is said to make good judgment on this decision. Thank you.
And then for ex, living in the morning, depends. If they were heading toward Chicago or something, or back to the tollway, they're going to be a right turn out. or something or back to the tollway, they're going to be a right turn out.
But about how many? Is it like the same exit over three or four hours?
It's a little bit quicker in the morning, and it can start at 6:00, and it depends, sometimes it can go up to 10 or 11 before, and some people want late checkouts. Have you ever wanted a late checkout and you end up leaving at 3:00 in the afternoon? So it really is a pretty wide flow as compared to, we own a restaurant, we get 75 cars an hour in a restaurant, so.
Thank you. I was just looking for point of comparison, that's all. That's all I have right now.
Can I read it?
So the Home Two Hilton, are there kitchenettes or something? Okay. So they would then use schnucks to buy food, probably. Then where would be the signage to show people that they have to take a turn onto Knowles and then take another left turn to get into the hotel? Where would be the sign that indicates that?
You know, I think I can leave that up to Dan because we're going to place the signs according to what the city's going to require, so.
Because I can't see myself driving there, I mean, if I wanted to go there and completely pass it because I have no sense of direction.
Well, the sign they've shown so far is on the building on the east elevation facing Annie Glidden.
But if you just see the building and you don't see an entrance?
Well, imagine they'll have a ground sign at the, it's up to developer to propose a ground sign at the intersection, near the intersection, so they can see it. And then they turn in, the landscaping will be cut so you can clearly see the building. There won't be a
But no flash.
Sign inside the landscape island. They don't own that property.
Oh, no, no, Hilton doesn't own that.
And then...
You might want to stay up.
Oh, no, no, actually, this for Dan, because I was just wondering, there is in the UDA, in the LC, there's a special-use LC that allows hotels and motels. And you said that it is better if it's planned development because the city has more control. But why?
The planned development?
I mean, just, yeah, why, why is that? I couldn't, I read in the UDA, oh, I couldn't find it in...
Yeah, the planned development, commercial and residential, it's in the UDO too.
Yeah, I'm sure it is.
There's separate zoning districts, but it talks a lot about the control the, those planned developments have, the more restrictive standards like for the buffer area compared to the light commercial. But in those, we also approve a development agreement with the planned development that dictates things beyond that can be approved with a special use, like things related to public safety, the length of time, in this case, for the length of time they can stay, restrictions on the type of, you know, hotel that goes forward in the future, all the type of development agreements, development standards that can be put in compared to a special use permit, which is kind of limited in terms of, you know, the conditions that we can put in and what we approve for the plan. You know, there's a plan approved with a special use permit, but it's much more limited than the planned development. So we get much more control over things, public safety, the uses, all the development standards going forward, so. I don't know if that answers it, but we get, the ordinance allows us to have more control, the UDO, compared to special use.
Otherwise, I have to say I'm very sympathetic to, I forgot your name, because if you buy in a certain area and you think there's a certain kind of zoning around there and you expect that, I think that's a primary reason why you end up buying there. I, when I buy a house, and I don't buy a house that often, don't have that kind of money, I looked at, it's right in the middle of a residential neighborhood, so those issues like that suddenly a hotel arrives next to me wouldn't happen. But, so, I think that's, that's a really strong reason that you gave us. Thank you.
I'll try to keep this brief. I really appreciate everybody that's come up and commented today, and I understand where you're coming from in all respects. I live in the Knowles, I live on Persimmon. I've been there for 21 years, and ironically, I grew up across the street at 807 West Taylor Apartment 307 from Tyler School all the way through high school, so I know that area very, very well. What I will say, and this has been my feeling on it, is that we did know that it was commercial property. I mean, we all knew that when we bought there. The sign has been up for sale for 20 years. And just to give you a comparison, I looked this up real quickly. Some of the things that are zoned as light commercial go anywhere from drugstores to craft shops to gasoline service stations, ice cream stores, the list goes on and on. You can look it up. And so the only thing I would ask is that you consider what's the least of all evils. And I don't believe that the traffic in and out of an extended stay would be anywhere near what a gas station or 7-Eleven or, you know, any strip mall would be. I certainly don't want to increase the traffic in my neighborhood. I don't want to have trouble getting in and out of it. I don't want to worry about kids riding their bikes along there. But I do think, in my opinion, again, to the point, we did know this was commercial when we purchased there. We did know that eventually something was going to be built. And in my feeling is that, and I know everybody has other suggestions as to where it should be built, but this is a commercial transaction. This isn't a lottery where we can simply pick and choose where we want things. I mean, this man purchased the property, he sold the property, and he wants to sell it for commercial purposes. We knew that. So again, I feel for you, I understand it because I'm living in the same neighborhood, but I also would ask everybody to consider what the least amount of impact would be to us as a whole because I'm two blocks away from it. Yes?
You keep trying to say a commercial, light commercial.
I understand it.
Yes.
And you're absolutely correct. Of the things that I just listed...
Hotel doesn't stand, doesn't stand up to light commercial.
No, I understand that, but a gas station does. And if, you know, everybody seems to be concerned about...
Okay, hang on. We're not going to have arguing in here. We will open this back up to the public in a little bit, but Mr. Maxwell finished.
Sorry, and I don't want to argue with you. All I'm saying is I'm just listing the things that could potentially go there. And so I'm asking you to at least consider what could be worse, so that's all.
We do have a list that we were given of light commercial district permitted and special uses, different things that were, there's like 50 things on that list, maybe more. Then there were special uses in the light commercial district, and those, some of those items were items that Mr. Maxwell had spoken.
Thanks.
Yep. David?
My turn.
Yep.
So I want to echo Ms. Cronopoulos one more time. I do believe that it is very valuable to hear what our fellow residents, fellow citizens think about whatever it is. I am a resident of DeKalb. All of the commissioners are residents in DeKalb, and in one way or another, we do feel the pain or the virtues or the good fortune of whatever it is that comes to DeKalb or leaves DeKalb. So I do appreciate public coming here and letting us know their thoughts. Mr. Patel, I have a couple of questions for you. I think two of them are easy, the third is difficult for me, but hopefully we'll entertain it here. So I know that last time you gave us this number, but could you give us again your average occupation for the Hampton Inn since it opened?
Right now, we're running 79% occupancy.
So that's on average, on peak time, it can reach 100%?
Yes. We're, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, we're sold out. Friday, Saturday, we're sold out. Usually Thursday, Sundays are when we have to lease them out, and that's what brings it down to 79%.
Okay. And your customers are mainly visitors from out of town, correct?
Mostly corporate clients, people who, their corporations are paying for them to stay, but they want the Hilton points.
Okay.
And we get a lot of NIU teams that stay with us as well. Just recently, now all girls visiting teams now stay at the Hampton. They used to stay at the Red Roof Inn, but because it's an outdoor corridor, it's unsafe, so we started getting all of that business coming to us as well.
Okay. So the reason I ask is, I wanted to get a bit of a profile of the hotel, the existing hotel, and who your customers are. The second question I have is, you presented this series of, or study of property values. Could you remind me again who did this?
So that's, that was RVG Commercial, and it's from the MLS listings, so that's just what houses sold for. And I'd just like to correct that the Hampton opened March of 2014, it was not 2015.
Okay.
And also, I'd just like to add, I know there's a lot of complaints from the residents about the height being 45 feet, but light commercial, as Dan mentioned, allows 45 feet. Our waiver is actually for an additional nine feet for just this, so just this portion in the front. The rest of the building is 45 feet, which is also allowed in light commercial.
Could you remind us what view is that? That's looking from the north or...
South.
So Annie Glidden Road is on the right side?
Yes.
Am I correct? Okay. Okay, thank you. I guess there is another map that has been shown on the screen for quite some time here that shows a considerable fraction of the Knowles and then the space where the, where the hotel would be, that one. So I, I guess this is the question that I have been trying to entertain here and use it as a, I hope it's representative of what is somewhat of a pain that I hear, smell in this room. And let me put it in this form. If, let's put ourselves in the place of an individual who is thinking about moving to DeKalb, and he or she is considering moving to the Knowles, and that person has an income that makes it completely eligible to get a mortgage for a property in this place. I don't know what the value aside from this information is. So if I see, if that person sees a for-sale sign on the house that is closest to this hotel in the future, doesn't exist yet, would that person consider, reconsider this property? Would that person devalue that as an option because of the proximity to the hotel? And again, I'm making an effort here to articulate what I feel as a pain of this proposal with respect to this neighborhood.
Sure.
And I'm representing it as one person coming in, looking at, happens to be the house that has a for-sale sign immediately adjacent to the hotel. I mean, what do you have to say? What would you say to that person?
Sure. I mean, that lot was always zoned commercial, right? Again, if a gas station was there, the same thing's going to happen. A gas station's allowed in light commercial. It'll probably devalue his house more than a high-quality hotel would if there was a gas station right next to his lot. And, you know, we should do our due diligence to make sure if we're located next to a commercial lot, whether it's light commercial or not, that we're asking for some sort of discount when we buy that property, right?
So you, do you feel that that specific property would be of lower value than, for example, the average or the median because of the presence of or development of a property on this lot, whether it's a gas station or hotel?
I think it should have been less valued because it's next to a commercial lot regardless of something was developed there or not. Knowing that something could eventually come there, right? You're right next to a commercial lot, so you should know that, that the house value is always going to be less than any other house around it. Because it was vacant for 20 years doesn't mean that something would never come there, Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have anything to add at the moment, so I'm going to give the public one more opportunity to speak if they wish, if they have anything different to say. Mr. Brown.
Can I have a picture, that picture put up there, please? No, I'm agreeing with you on that. Well, that's good. Can I ask you guys a question? Why is this all here and this not move this way?
This area up here is floodplain, so the hotel can't be shifted closer to Annie Glidden Road because of the floodplain restrictions.
Just for the record, that would absolutely be what I thought. Okay. Mr. Patel talks about putting gas stations or whatever there. Chance, the reason this property hasn't sold is because it's a floodplain? They really have a hard time putting anything there. Because it doesn't have any access to Annie Glidden, you are restricted in your use. You're restricted in the people that are going to use it. I mean, it's not been empty for 20 years for no reason. And yet, we can feel maybe a little bit, we're not too bright, because when they talk light commercial, none of us, I don't think there's a person, other new people in this room, that thought 45-foot hotel. So we're just not that bright, we apologize. But it's just not there. Just to say that something else could be put there, if something else could have been put there, why isn't it there? Mr. Larson has held on to their property for what? This, this property here, putting a 45-foot hotel on it with all that asphalt around it, draining into more pollution into that retaining pond, which is going to go into the creek, you're not helping out the neighborhood. You're not doing the neighborhood any favors, and during construction, you're going to create a lot of havoc. Again, you have no access to Annie Glidden, you're going to tie up that entrance no matter how you do. I work in the construction booth. I work on heavy equipment. I load machinery on the 85-foot trailers daily. I know what it takes to try and turn. With them islands there, there's going to be a lot of times when that equipment will have to come in from Malta and come this way to be able to make that turn unless you take that island out. There are a lot of variables here. The other thing I would like to ask is, well, actually, there's another use for these hotels. You're not serving any liquor, right? You have no liquor sales, but you do have full refrigerators. Do you have any regular rooms here, or are these all kitchen?
They're all.
They're all kitchens. So if I come in there and I'm going to stay for a week, I can load up your refrigerator with beer, okay? Or if I decide, what's your occupancy max to a room? Do you have a max? Or is that overnight, or is that at any time?
Anytime.
Any, okay. In other words, if I wanted to have a party there, which this is dumb often, especially in suites, I'm going to one soon. Okay? They have a party, they invite all their friends up there, they have a refrigerator they can stock with beer, and then they decide to go out, and then they decide to come in. Just something to think about. Extended-stay hotels are different than Hampton. There's no correlation between the two. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
If you could make sure and fill out one of the forms before you leave.
My name's Amanda Ani. I also live at 1230 Mason Street. My wife was saying we're very concerned because we have five children. Four of them are three and a half and under, so we're concerned. We use the park, you know, we use the paths to go walking. We do have an older son who's at DeKalb High School, and they're saying that check-in time is normally 3:00. Well, that's when our kids are getting off buses. That's when they're coming home from school. Check-out time's bright and early in the morning when our kids are going to the bus stop. We're right there on Mason. People miss left turns all the time. I know you were saying that. How am I going to see that turn? They miss it? They're turning on my street. Most likely turning in my driveway because of where our house is. We're the second house in on the left. People turn around in our driveway often. What's that going to look like now, we're putting up a towel that people aren't used to going to? You know, we talk about light commercial, maybe it's not lucrative enough, people don't want a little coffee house or a gas station, but those are the things and the services that the people in the neighborhood would use. None of us are going to use an extended-stay hotel. We have homes. We live in the homes. You know, people that are going to come and use these coffee shops are people that live in this town. That's what the light commercial is zoned for, that's what people expected, that's what we expected when we bought our house a few years back. And that's all I had to add. I just wanted to, thank you. Thank you for letting me speak.
Dennis Magelski, 1220 Hills Avenue South. Now, this man says he has like 75 to 100% occupancy in that other hotel. I live right behind it. I can see their parking lot. They might have five, 10 cars there. It's not filled up. That's, he's, I want to see proof of all, how much you rent that thing every day for the whole year or every year that you've been there, proof of your occupancy, to see that this hotel or whatever you want to put up is needed. It's not, might be needed, but it's not needed in our subdivision. That's all I got to say. That's all I gotta say.
If you, yeah.
I mean, you know, I'm not using Wall Street money to build this. I'm taking a loan out with a local bank, personally guaranteeing it eleven million dollars. If that's not proof enough, why would I do that and jeopardize both properties? Also, the loan's been approved. They saw the numbers on the Hampton. The loan would've never been approved if they didn't think it was profitable or success. Hilton would've never given us a flag if they didn't think it was gonna be a success. You can't judge a hotel by how many cars are in the parking lot.
Okay. Before I can take any more public comments, guess what time it is? Who would like to do the motion?
Motion. I'm motioning to go.
No, you can, I'll tell you about that later.
Do I really have to?
We probably should extend at least till ten. Just to be safe, just so we're covered.
I'll make the motion to extend until ten if needed.
Motion made by Buckley.
I second.
Second by Barbie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All pose time sign. Okay. Anyone else that would like to speak from the public? Okay. I am closing the public portion. And now, turning this over to any questions, any further comments. What do you all want to know that we have not heard tonight?
Can I make a comment?
Or the last two nights, yeah.
So, I, I just have a comment to the light commercial district. A light commercial district does not include gas stations, at least according to what I have here. It's the light commercial special use that has gas stations in there. So, if you look at the UDO, it does, it says here particularly convenience store in parentheses, excluding motor fuel on the premises, meat markets and bakeries. So, just to make that clear, because that seemed to have been mixed up.
I have something for Mr. Olson. Would you just clarify the purpose of the Planning and Zoning Commission and what our function is and what our leeway is?
Sure. The function is to review the testimony and findings of fact, the documents, the supporting information, and make your findings based on what is being requested. And that is rezoning. So, you have the, noted in the staff report, the standards for rezoning, the five standards. You go by that and also the standards for plan development. So, those are what you go by and make your findings, and then your recommendation is based off of that.
Thank you.
For this particular site.
Thank you.
Max? Any questions? No. Dave? No? All right. One thing that I need to go over, and Dan, you're probably gonna have to help me, 'cause I think in the seven, eight years I've been on this commission, I've had to do this once, and I was not the chair. If our vote is in the negative this evening, we have to go through the findings of fact, and we have to prove which pieces are, can you explain that for us all?
Walk us through it. I'd like that.
Sure. The findings, they're listed here, so if you, they're written, what we found, going through it and recommending approval, that the findings show that the project should be approved, rezoned and plan development approved. If the commission finds something different, if you're heading in that way, then you need to find reasons why these findings are leaning towards denying it, if that's what you're want to do. So, I don't know, sure, your question about the negative vote? So, it kinda depends what the commission feels in terms of approval or denial of this.
Right.
If, we did another one like this similar. If, for example, the commission decides to vote no, it's still going to city council?
Yes.
And they will then go through all of this again?
Correct.
And if they approve it, it would come back to us again?
No.
Or they would just override it.
They can approve it or deny it, yeah. So, you're recommending bodies, so, but if you find, these findings are written to approve it, so if you wanna go the other way, you need to come up with reasons based on these findings to deny it.
That would point it to not be approved.
Right.
Correct. So, I need to gauge from you all before we make our vote, kind of what you're thinking so that we know what we're doing. I hate this part.
I do, too.
I really do.
I really do, too.
And the reason why we don't like this is because it's, it's very, it's very painful, and it's not difficult to put ourselves in the place of the different parties in this situation, particularly with, in the place of the fellow residents and citizens.
And there's a lot of information, sorry to cut you off, there's a lot of information that we have to take into consideration. A lot of information, not just your input. There's all of the information that was provided by the city, all of the information that was provided by the, the developer and the owner, and everything has to be taken into consideration. Yes, we are making the decision for the rezoning, but we're making it based on the information that we've been given. As well, we do consider your public input. We consider our input. That's why, not to be the bearer in this, that's why we needed to be able to hear what was being said. We're making this decision. It's a tough decision to make. We're making it for the city, and we're making it for the residents. We're not making it based on our own consideration. We're doing it based on the city. So, with that being said, that's why this is difficult. It's a, a, part of me wants to say yes to this because it's going to bring potential revenue into the city. Do we need something like this? Yes, we sure as heck do. My brother travels on an ongoing basis and stays at extended stay hotels, sometimes up to three weeks, because he doesn't live where he works. This could also potentially draw in some new business for the city. It could bring in some new manufacturing for the city that we desperately need. Is this the area for it? Part of me says, a lot of me says no. That's what we have to consider. That's what we have to consider. So, with that being said, David, continue. I just need, I've been stewing on this for a month now, as to how I was gonna articulate that to you all, to the public that is watching us.
And, and I appreciate, I'm glad that you released the pressure a little bit. I, I know that there is pressure in the air. Having said, every, I, I don't have a lot to say at this point, except for the fact that I understand and, and feel the pain, but my inclination is for voting in favor of approving this application.
I, I realize I'm new to the game, but please don't think that I have not followed this. I have for quite some time. I, I follow pretty much every development in DeKalb fairly ruthlessly. And I, I understand your concerns, I really do, and I appreciate them. And again, living two blocks away, I hope you understand that. But I do think that in terms of the locale and its access to eighty-eight, what it potentially can do for the people that I've spoken to at Northern, in terms of their athletic teams and from a corporate standard, I, again, I think that there, there are things that would be far more detrimental in terms of traffic and congestion in that area. I, I think that the negotiation, as we had done previously with the lighting and the shrubbery and the enhancements and landscaping, I, I would have a hard time arguing it. And again, I have followed this for some time, so please don't think that I'm walking into this new.
Katerina.
Well, I must say, I agree with Chris. I think it is in the wrong location, and because it does need a zoning change from light commercial, and light commercial does not include a hotel, I would vote against it.
Oh, boy. I asked Mr. Olson for clarification for one reason, and the way I view my position here, as much as I empathize and hurt and feel it, I believe our position is to look at the facts as they're presented and rule based on the facts, as much as we appreciate, I appreciate your input, and I definitely do. And it's not easy. It's, it's something I've thought and thought and thought about since the last zoning meeting. But at this point, based on the facts, I would be in favor.
Okay. So, whoever would like to do the motion?
I don't have it.
So, Dan, what is on our dais is the most up-to-date exhibits, correct?
Yeah. The motion's the same as the previous report you got in the packet. The updates are just the date of the plans. So, the sample motion.
What pages? It's on this one. I have two hundred and eleven pages. No, it's on this extra sheet that was on the dais tonight.
Yeah, there's a handout that updated this, the plan dates and the comment letter. The motion is the same, the sample motion.
One of the very important things that I know, again, please, people in my area were concerned about, you had talked about some of the conditional aspects of the proposal, that being which, that it would not be converted to apartment dwellings under the contract or that it would not be converted into any type of long-term residential. Is that something we can affect in our proposal and/or suggestion, then?
Yes. Absolutely.
So, that would go down in the exhibit B or in the development standards?
Would be in the development standards.
Wouldn't? So, it could be a s, item five?
Yes.
I don't have a pen. So...
There's a provision, too, about the length of stay, but if you wanna expand on that to, that it's not convert to apartments or some other residential use.
So, do it there in that?
It'd be appropriate under the development standards to have that.
Okay. So, in our, yeah, in, in this document that was given to us, that was sitting here when we came tonight. So, under exhibit A is what we're talking about. There are a few things that Dan had mentioned that I think we need to take into consideration. One item, where, where was that color on the building at, Dan?
That's under the exhibit B. The elevations be revised more with tone colors for the ephes and the vertical band.
Okay. I'll get to that in a minute, then. So, under exhibit A, under development standards, that's where we could put in an item number five, as Max was saying, whomever wants to make the motion. We wanna make sure, if we wanna make sure that it stays, the use only as a hotel, that's where that would go.
Could we also incorporate the lighting aspect, too, because that's one of the things we had addressed when the other hotel was built, in terms of lumen and how it's gonna affect the surrounding area? I, I know that they made a deliberate effort in the post-planning to make sure that all the lighting was directed downward and not affecting the residents.
They actually have submitted a photometric plan with a lighting detail, and that, the standard in the UDO is that it be shoebox, that the light is directed downward, not horizontal.
And that would be in the photometric plan that has to be submitted?
Yeah. That was revised to show the correct photom, or the foot candle levels that are required for commercial limitations.
Would length of stay also go in number five, or would that go somewhere else?
We can adjust that length of stay, which is in number two.
Yeah, it's already in there, number two already.
Any of these items under the, under, any pieces of exhibit A or B can be adjusted as you, or expounded, as you feel the need.
Could they be adjusted after we vote to? I mean, who's, who can change later, say, oh, five? We don't want that anymore. Could a later body change that again? I mean, how binding is if we say it's not supposed to become an apartment?
Well, yeah. Any agreement that the city approves, there could be, any developer, anybody, future landowner could propose to change anything. But it has to be approved by the city.
Right. They have to come through again.
Go through the process that we're going through now, public hearings and...
So, in a way, it's not binding, then? I mean, we can say it makes us feel better.
But they would have to come back and undo.
They'd still have to go through this whole process.
Yeah.
Which I think would be more to undo than it is to do.
It might be harder.
That's what I mean. It would be more...
I mean, we're just changing the zoning, so it's easy to do.
No, but to go back and undo what we've done.
So, whoever would like to make the motion? I would be happy to take a motion.
I'm new, why not?
Go for it.
Do you have your paper? You're gonna need that. So, so, wait, I'm sorry. Let me go back a minute.
Motion for recommendation?
Do you wanna change number two? Is there any changes that you wanna make to the length of stay?
It's thirty days now.
What was it, currently?
Thirty days.
Thirty days?
Thirty days.
Again, if there's an adjunct professor or something, I'd...
Right. The color, that color, Dan, can you put that graphic up with the green? So, this color...
It sure is kinda bluish here, but it's more of a lighter green, that strip.
Right. Make it more natural green, is what you were saying?
More, yeah. Earth tone color, darker.
And that would be in exhibit B?
Yeah, that's already listed as item two in exhibit B.
The green vertical band. So, are you all happy with that color, or do you wanna have it adjusted?
I'm not the first to ask.
No, not either.
It's part of what we have to give them as guidelines.
I thought it is natural color.
Dan, you asked about something for the top or the fish?
Yeah, they have a small amount of ornamental change which we asked for, but there's some limitations Hilton has, so.
Oh, okay.
All their condition is that the change with the band and the ephes color more earth tone, that's all we're asking to be changed.
Silly question, but can you do any type of rooftop landscaping around the air conditioner just so it doesn't sit out there like that?
Yeah.
I mean, a couple of shrubs?
Or something.
Be nice.
Yeah, I was just wondering. Had to just hang there.
Yeah, actually Hilton will require us to put some screening around that as well. And it may not even stick up quite that high, but we just asked for it in case we needed it. It may very well be less than what the Hampton was.
Yeah, they're all the parapet screening. Did you say something else?
I, I was looking more at a rooftop garden-type shrubbery around it or something like that, just so, but if that's unrealistic, that's fine.
Could we ask them to do something like we did on top of the Taylor Street building when they put the reflective so that it blends in more to the sky? Remember what we did with the cell towers and the cell exposed equipment? It's like a reflective.
Yeah, reflective tape that reflected parapet screening around some antennas.
Yeah.
Mirrors everything around.
It kinda blends, yeah, mirrors it blends into the sky that's up, up top more than just the thing that's hanging out.
You could, I don't know if, we'd have to, I don't think you've dealt with that, or...
Yeah.
Yeah, we've never dealt with that before, but I would have to go with Hilton for approval.
I mean, the parapet materials are part of the architecture, what they're showing. It's not just some fence.
Yeah. It is what it is, but if you can hide it great.
Yeah. Extend it and screen it.
Look into it, that'd be good.
So, the sample motion is the handout, if you agree. But the motion to prove that, you would just read that with the additional change regarding the change to future apartments or residential.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but motion, motion to approve Home with Two Suites by Hilton Modified Recommendation Sample Motion Based on the Submitted Petition Testimony Presented, I Move that the Planning and Zoning Commission Forward Its Findings of Fact and Recommend to the City Council Approval of the Zoning Map Amendment for LC Light Commercial District to PDC Plan Development Commercial District and Approval of a Plan Development Plan for Ninety Rooms Homewood, Home Two Suites by Hilton Hotel to be Located on the Subject Property Per Plan Development Plans and Development Standards Listed in Exhibit A and Subject to All Staff Comments Being Addressed by Prior Final City Council Action Listed in Exhibit B.
Does he need to go?
Yeah, we should include your change tradition.
Exhibit A Plan Development Plans Color Exterior Buildings For Sheets Exterior Elevations A5 1.12... elevations, A5, one point one...point oh-two, dated eight-three.
You don't need to read through those. That's part of the Exhibit A you mentioned about the addition of the restrictions on the...
Oh, okay. In addition to Exhibit A, we would like to accommodate for pre-existing language that would...that would denote that the facility cannot be used or anything other than long-term stay, no...meaning no apartment usage or long-term development.
As number five.
As in...
As number five.
As number five. And Exhibit B.
B.
Under Exhibit A.
A.
Got it.
Okay. A motion made by Maxwell?
Second.
Second by Buckley, roll call. No, I'm sorry. Any discussion? Roll call.
Anthony, Nina, Barbie? No. Vicky Buckley? Yes. David Castro?
Yes.
Max Maxwell?
Yes.
Deborah Neer? Derry Wright? Chair Christina Doe?
No.
Approved three to two.
I do want to reiterate thank you to the public for coming and speaking out. Reports.
They're absent.
I hope that's it, isn't it? Is there more? Reports and whatnot. I have close to nothing. Get back together up here.
We're not done yet. Sorry. But hang on, we're almost done. Reports.
Next meeting is August twenty-second. We have two public hearings, which I sent the commission emails, variance for a fence at one-four-five Heritage and a rezoning to planned development up on Sycamore Road to expand some commercial uses.
Just real briefly, I wanted to mention on the work that you've done on this project, it's never easy to have a project like this where you have a very specific set of rules and standards that could be...not only that the ordinance outlines, but that ordinance is drafted law. And so, when a petitioner who has rights on the property brings forward something to you that meets a lot of the criteria that are outlined in the law, to not make findings to support that project could result in a follow-up litigation. So, it is important here for us to speak out because in certain cases, this becomes the precedent as to look at amending our code. If we think that for any reason some of the things that were said need to be amended in the future, that would be something that we would need to take a look at. We are always taking a look at our codes and do they make sense? And codes are an evolving thing, so we do want to make sure that we are understanding that. The other comment I want to make is about, and it came up a couple of times, I think, in both projects, was about comprehensive planning and the need for comprehensive planning. I don't know if you've heard it, but at one point a reference was made to our comprehensive plan, which is approved in two thousand and five. It's a very old plan. I think, you know, I've been here for a couple of years and Boldner, she asked the council to consider approving projects to update the comprehensive plan. It's an expensive project, isn't it? It's a long-term process and we have choices to do it out with consultants or we have choices to do it in-house. But if we do it in-house, that means we're not doing our jobs trying to bring people in and helping these companies. So, there are chaos. We did do a sub-area plan. The council was very committed to a sub-area plan in the north Anywood and Row area. And that will result in a smaller scale amendment to our comprehensive plan specific to that area. We're not giving up on the rest of the area. We just, you know, we keep hearing at this point where it's in very tough financial times right now and we keep hearing from our citizens and the council, we need to get back to the basics. And right now, the basics for us is to grow our economy. And that's kind of the marching orders that we need to be carrying from our council. And so, when we're talking to people about coming to DeKalb and those who are in community, that's what we're trying to come up with. We need to bring forward to this group. So, again, I appreciate your efforts. If anybody has any questions, comments, wants this group to have through their conversation about comprehensive planning, please let me know. We're happy to accommodate that in your agenda.
So, I know one thing that we had brought up maybe a couple of months ago that we were going to eventually look at was the sign ordinance also. Is that in...are we going to get to that soon?
We are having some conversations with the Economic Development Commission on our EBC, our local commission, about updates to both, you know, the code, the UDO, as well as the sign code. And the sign code has been one on the council's list for longer. The middle of the summer, when we're busy with development, is not the kind of time that we can commit to it. And we don't have the budget to have an outside consultant come in and do it. So, it is on our list. We're asking the council again to prioritize or let us know where in the priorities that lies when they're going through their budget.
Okay.
So, we should know as they go through that budget process what priority that would be for the company.
Okay, okay, thanks. Anything else commissioners?
Not a thing.
Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn. So, move by Barbie, second by Buckley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.